I would like to call us to order at this time. And Dr. Cash, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have Spanish translation for this this evening.
Muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar unificado Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un autífono. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have headsets for the hearing impaired and please indicate if you would like one. That takes us to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
I want to thank Ms. Rodriguez for being here. That's Vivian Rodriguez for the, there she is, for being here to translate. And today, we're very fortunate to have Anna Mara Quinn from Dos Publos High School, who will be providing tonight's student report. Hannah, you're up. Oh, two of them.
Jessica.
Oh, and Jessica, all right. Who's injured. Wow.
Well, good evening, everybody. So to begin, all the high schools, which includes DP, San Barbara, and San Marcos, have had their winter formals the last three Saturdays. They've all been a success. They've all had a lot of fun. We've also started using the wristbands just to lower the way students dance and to have a more safer and fun environment for everyone who's attending. So that's starting to go through all the dances, which is going really great. Also, the fundraisers and events going on around the high schools at San Barbara, they're selling candy grams to go towards their senior prom, because proms are quite expensive. Also, the ASB, they're starting their pennies for patients. And Girls' Varsity Basketball did their breast cancer awareness, where they sold pink-colored t-shirts and accessories, and they sold it, and all of the monies went to breast cancer awareness. At DP, Cheer, they did their fundraiser for Valentine's Day, which is selling carnations. So the past week, they've been selling, and today, they all got handed out in honor of Valentine's Day. So it was really, really great. San Marcos, they did their Kids Helping Kids, big fundraiser at the Granada Theater, and they had Sara Bareilles there. And it was a big success, as it is every year. So that went really well.
Hello, I'm Jessica Scalante, the ASB president of Dos Publos, and I'll be giving the report for DP. DP had carpool week, which encouraged students and parents to carpool every day of the week, and prizes were given out to students. February 2nd was DP's showcase night for incoming eighth-grade parents and students who are interested in becoming a Charger. Our engineering academy is in the process of building their robot, and they'll be shipping it off pretty soon, and they've been very successful in past years. And congratulations to Mr. Yamahata and 13 of his students for becoming VITA certified. These students will be able to assist low-income parents with tax preparation. Four of our winter sports are moving on to CIF, girls' basketball, girls' water polo, wrestling, and girls' soccer. We also have three presidential scholar candidates, Ve Loon Hoon, Justin Morris, and Connie Wang. And Westmont's annual mathematics contest, DP's ninth and 10th grade mathematics team won the college bowl and the written team exam. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming on Valentine's Day also. And I know a number of us have been on the campuses recently and just seen all the great things that are going on at school. So thank you for coming and sharing that with the public.
Madam President, I'd just like to pass on my thanks, and if you could pass it on to the student bodies, that the acceptance of the wristband project and program is very much appreciated and the fact that it's been accepted so nicely. Thank you.
Great way to start a board meeting, listening to two wonderful students talk about the great things at our high school. Well, some other great news, our students are preparing for the February 23rd county spelling bee, and we'll definitely keep you posted about the results and how our students perform. I also want to let you know that our Measure Q 2010 bond progress report is currently posted. There's copies available here. You each have a beautiful copy as well, and the copies are available at the back of the room, and we're going to make sure that our community knows about the great work that's happening at our schools as a result of their generosity in passing that bond measure. As you all know, the common core state standards are, will be implemented across our nation and in the state of California, starting with the next school year. Sue Gendron, who is a nationally-known professional development person, was in our district and conducted a training for 90 teachers in our district. And I was there for part of the day and saw a lot of great work happening. We're very fortunate, a number of our teachers are going to be receiving the 2011-12 Teachers' Network grant, and they'll be recognized by our county education office next week at a special ceremony on February 23rd, which I know some of us will be attending. I also want to let you know that we're moving forward with a Fall Academy Showcase. That'll be for our eighth-grade students, where our eighth-grade students will have an opportunity to visit and learn about the great academies in our high schools and our specialized programs that are there. And you'll hear more about this at upcoming board meetings. I also want to let you know that we're working with one of our closest partners, University of California, Santa Barbara, and Dr. Jane Close Conley, and Suzanne Peck, who's the author of Stand Tall, which is, will have an after-school presentation centered on teaching respect, preventing bullying, particularly in grades four and six. And you'll be receiving an invitation to the event, which will take place on March 22nd and is open to all of our teachers in our component elementary schools, as well as our own students. And the Stand Tall video clip is currently on YouTube, and the YouTube address has been provided to you and is also on a table in the back of the room. And it's a really great video, and it actually features students at one of our elementary schools. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. That takes us to board comments and correspondence. Would any board members like to share, Mrs. Cordero?
I just wanted to point out, I attended two activities this past week that I think reiterate the great working relationship we have with a lot of organizations in the community. One was the Santa Barbara Symphony and their youth program, Beethoven Upstairs, I think was the title of it, where our students from throughout the district were invited to attend and also were even recognized for essay contests that they participated in. And there were hundreds of our students that participated in that, and it was a fabulous program. I had intended to sneak out early, and I had to stay for the entire thing because it was so good. Then also, the Domestic Violence Solutions poster contest winners were announced last week, and I believe that we're going to have the director coming in March to share some of the winning posters and some of the finalists with us. But I just wanted to say that all of those students were students from our district, mostly high school, I think. And the posters and the designs that they created were just incredibly professional, poignant, and really, they did an excellent job of sharing the message of domestic violence, especially among dating teens, with the rest of the community, which I thought was a great service. They created a PSA, the posters, of course, and then also these little bookmarks that I've actually, I took several of them and have even shared them with my students at Santa Barbara City College. I was surprised at how anxious all of them were to get one, including the males. I was not certain that the young men would be as interested, but they were. And they're very informative on, I call one side, the side with the hearts, the happy side, because it tells all the things that you should have in your relationship. And then the other side are sort of the warning signs of what to look out for in relationships. So those were just two really excellent examples, I think, of the way that our community works with and supports our students at our schools.
Mr. Heron.
I just, also, at the symphony, have to, there are not enough words you can say about the symphony and the way they organize that. For the day I was there, I think 1,200 students, totally organized. I was impressed with the students. They were absolutely wonderful in their, in their actions and their activity. The whole performance was tremendous. It was a great opportunity, and the symphony, you know, should be commended for that.
Mrs. Parker.
It's kind of a musical night, I think. I'm going to lead off with Los Lonely Boys. And Mrs. Deacon and I were at that, and a number of staff members were there, including Ms. Kiani here and Ms. Jete, who were, I think, dancing in the pit in the, at the end there, weren't you?
Don't forget Mrs. Sowaski and her husband.
Well, she, yeah, she was there in her leather jacket, and it was, it was a great show, and I, you know, I really thank Los Lonely was a Grammy Award-winning band for the effort that they put in to help our music program at La Cumbre Junior High. Also, in terms of our students and music, elementary, junior high, and high school honor band was last week at Marjorie Luke, and impressive as usual. I was thrilled to be able to attend that. And one other thing that I wanted to bring up in terms of the bullying piece was that the secondary gate program had brought in Dr. Michelle Borba. It was really open to all students and to teaching staff. Dr. Michelle Borba, who is a child development expert, she appears on The Today Show and on Dateline, and is, I've seen her present before. She was amazing, and I think she really blew our teachers away and the parents that came. So I hope that we'll be able to get her back again and expand her audience, because she was very, very impressive and really helpful, talked a lot about bullying issues.
Ms. Limon.
Well, and I just have an announcement. I want to make sure that our students know that Safe Launch does have a contest going on for all of our student artists out there, both photography and two-dimensional media. So I want to encourage all the students, any parents watching that have students who are interested in media art and photography, to consider joining or being part of this contest, which does have a $500 prize. And the deadline for that, to register for that, is March 1st, and the website is www.safelaunch.org.
Thank you. And I'll just touch base on the symphony. Mr. Heron and I sat next to each other, but it was fabulous. And Mrs. Heather Cash was there with her students as well. So it was, it was really phenomenal, and they made the point at the symphony about how important it is that it's ongoing, because the teachers really develop curriculum around it, and the students learn about the instruments, and it's so important, and we're really the beneficiaries. Our students are the donations to the, the community makes to the Santa Barbara Symphony for that. I wanted to just mention that the Parents' Special Education Advisory Group met and had a really terrific presentation about alternative dispute resolution, and I know that the parents really appreciated that. And the Sustainability Council also met, and the student participants in that group brought some terrific ideas for conservation. They had calculated how much money we would save in energy conversation if we changed out light bulbs in different locations. And there's a whole group of community members that are participating in that from the green build community, and so that group is very energized, and I look forward to more meetings with them. So we will now move on to public comments, if we have any.
We do have public comment. Kenneth Locke.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I might be for the city council today, and I told them I was going to be here tonight. I mentioned to them about, as I think I mentioned to you before, the fact that I became enlightened through the means of tennis and the whole basis of my project, Tennisance, the Renaissance of Tennis, is based on this enlightenment that I witnessed. And now, I actually provide the means for people to get on their, the path to enlightenment. So historically, there hasn't been, people have not been aware of this path, but now people can get on the path so that they can become enlightened. This, right now, the education that we've had, I'm sorry to say, has not put a student on the path to become enlightened. So what, what is the path that, that you're putting the students on right now? Well, it's a path that's leading them into this capitalist society, where you're actually forcing them to compete, and then you're throwing them into a society that's all based on competition. I'm sorry that, that model is failing us tremendously. When a student is put on the path to enlightenment, they'll have the, they'll be, also be put on the path to where they can become holistically healthy. Right now, none of the tennis players or any of the athletes right now within this, say, this school are not on the path to become holistically healthy. That concept is, I don't think there's really anybody who has any understanding of that in relation to exercise. They'll also have, they understand the basis of the integration of the mind and body, which actually will provide them with the means for actually understanding what reality actually is versus delusion. And they'll become mentally healthy, based on the fact that they'll have actually a basis for building a relationship between their mind and body. And then also, then physically, they'll also be able to become healthy. This is when they're on their path to becoming enlightened. They'll understand the basis of a spiritual relationship, which is, it's important to actually have the understanding of the mind-body. That actually provides the means for a spiritual relationship. 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
There you go. And then, the whole basis of the soul, or the sole purpose that tennis serves, is understood in relation to a community, but then the sole purpose is to actually, to be able to, for an individual to actually reach a point of where they can actually become a teacher. So the project's called Tennisance, the Renaissance of Tennis. It's tennis with two S's, A-N-C-E. If you Google that, or it's actually .net.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to back up, because I did not announce the closed session action. We have taken a recess from our closed session. We will be returning to it at the end of our meeting this evening, and then we will be reporting out the results of that, but we will be reporting out B2 later during our open session. Which takes us to acceptance of donations. Move to accept with gratitude?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And moving on to the consent agenda, we are pulling D15. D6 and D2 have been revised, and the revisions are on the dais. Are there any other items board members would like to pull? Mrs. Parker.
D7.
Ms. Limon.
D6. And I want to make a note, I'm just pulling that to abstain, so.
Item D1, which is just a very minor correction.
Did that have to do with names?
Yes, it did.
We became melded as one.
Yes, we did.
We were Deacon Cordero. I actually pointed it out to Mimi Hall, and she has made that correction.
Okay, then I'm fine.
So we're, we're safe on D1. Okay, so we will come back to D6 and D7 at the end of the meeting. Is there a motion to approve, approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. No.
Madam President, can I also move to do D6?
Yes, D6 has been pulled.
No, but can I just move to prove it?
I'm just abstaining.
Oh, okay. Good point. All right. So Ms. Limon is abstained from D6, so we can go ahead and.
I'll second.
Okay. So we're going to include that in our overall motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda items.
No, you need to do it separately.
Okay. We're going to do it separately. Thank you. Okay. So we have already voted to approve the remainder of the consent agenda items. That passed 5-0. Now we're moving, a motion has been made to, sorry, approve D6 with Ms. Monique Limon abstaining. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Abstentions, one. Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention. It's been a long week, sorry, folks. All right. So that takes us to the action agenda. And our first item is E1, Approval of Contraband Detection and Deterrent Program Services. Mr. Sumter, are you going to lead us in this discussion?
I am. Thank you. This is actually, as you're aware, an item that came before you several months ago, back at the beginning of the school year, and there's been much discussion and research put into the organizations that provide these services. Of course, we're talking about the contraband detection drug-dog programs. You have in front of you tonight additional information related to two companies that provide these services, a kind of a comparison of the two, with some differences and similarities noted there. The two programs, Kids Incorporated, Contraband Interdiction Detection, I'm sorry, it's Contraband Interdiction and Detection Services, Inc., an acronym being Kids, and the other one, Interquest Detection Canines, are the two that have been researched and discussion held with the organization and questions that the board has had in the past, brought back to you with those answers. So tonight, basically, we're revisiting this now to seek the board's approval for contracting for one of these services and a selection of a service provider.
Thank you. Board, would we like to, do some of you have comments you'd like to offer at this time on this item?
Is there any public comment?
None.
I heard today that the sheriff may, or law enforcement may provide this service for free. Have we looked into that?
No, I was not aware that that was an option, that they were able or willing, or that was something that we could even look into. No.
I have, while I have not contacted Santa Barbara County, I can tell you that the law enforcement approach is very different than both of these private services in relationship to how the canines are utilized on the campus, kind of the visual presence of them. And while I do not know in Santa Barbara County, so I don't know, I just know from a previous experience, that it's not, it's, it's done when it can be done.
In other words, the availability would not be the same as if we went with one of these. Yeah. I actually posed this question to Mr. Sumter earlier today, and there was a concern about using local law enforcement, I think, because it really takes a different cast than if you have a private company doing it, that's trained to do the presentations to family members and students ahead of time. So as much as that might sound appealing on a fiscal level, I'm not sure if that's the way we want to go or not.
The other question I had, do you have a recommendation between the two?
What I know of the two firsthand is that the Kids, Inc. organization actually is an offshoot of Interquest. Interquest is a franchise, so the, the organizations can be privately owned, the different groups can be privately owned if they have dogs that are trained and buy the name. Kids, Inc. is an umbrella corporation based out of Texas. They do have a corporation or a corporate office in Modesto, Central Valley, where I come from. That's why I have firsthand experience with them. They were the service provider for our school district there for many years. And I can speak very candidly about that program, that it is very positive, very strong, very professional. And the difference between them and Interquest might be the idea of the franchise versus a corporation, an umbrella corporation. And then you would notice in the comparison, some slight differences in their services. One notable point would be the insurances provided, being a $2 million general liability insurance through Kids and a $1 million general liability insurance through Interquest. So there's some broader coverage that way financially, if there's any issues that might come up.
Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I apologize if this question seems obvious, but I, because I know I missed a meeting, and I thought I had been careful to make sure I knew what had gone on at that meeting. But, so, but have we actually taken a vote already to support the bringing in the dogs to begin with?
No, we have not.
Okay. So, okay, so I guess I'm a little bit concerned about, I feel like we're kind of jumping over that part of the discussion to talk about which ones we will bring in. And I would like to go back to the step of whether or not we should bring them in at all. And I, I don't feel like I've, like we have had enough public input on that item. I'm actually a little bit surprised to see that there aren't any public comments tonight. And I'm just wondering, have there been meetings specifically with members of the Latino community to address this issue, or this, to raise these questions?
I've met with every ELAC of the secondary schools.
Okay.
And the DELAC, and talked about it.
And, and.
And just said, this is something that, that will be before the board, answered questions, gave kind of a skeleton idea of what, what it would look like if I was a student at a school.
And, and like the pueblo representatives, or Esperanza, or?
Did not speak to them, only spoke to parents.
Just communities? Okay, okay.
Dr. Cash, could you recap your discussions with other parent groups? It's been such a long time since we've talked about this. I know we first gave you direction to go out and get community feedback, so maybe you could just recap what you did and what kind of feedback you got.
Sure. I met with PTA, PTO, PTSAs, and ELACs and DELACs of each secondary school in the district at meetings, nighttime meetings, and essentially said to them, this is something that will be before the board. It is, here's, I described what it would look like, what I just said to a student, asked them if what questions or concerns they had, so that I could bring them back and report them to the board. As I reported last fall, in almost every circumstance, parents were in favor of this happening at the school. Subsequent to that, I've met with students at schools. I haven't had, you know, I haven't done a general assembly, anything like that, but I've met in leadership classes, and I believe Mr. Sumter has as well, and talked to students there. I was just recently at San Marcos High School, doing a tour of the campus, and I talked to probably just a randomly half a dozen kids there as well. I think because it's been a topic of conversation I was sharing earlier today, many students think that there already are canine happening in our schools. In fact, I had a student ask me if I was the, if I was the dude with the dogs. And I shared with them that I was not the dude with the dogs, that that had not happened, that the, that the decision had not been made. But if that decision had been made, he would know, because I explained there would be a process of assemblies and parents and so. So that's what, I did that in response to when it first came up, which I think was, was it in the summertime or early fall?
October, November.
Right. So then I went out and did all that work. I haven't been back since then, but.
Mrs. Parker, did you want to say something, or you?
I can wait until.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Cordero.
I'm sorry, I just, I have several concerns about this, so I just, I'll kind of go down the line. One is that I have heard that there are groups of students on our campuses who feel that they are the targets of this, that it's being sort of directed at them. And so one of the things we had talked about is having a policy in place that would clearly outline how it was going to be implemented, so that there would be no students who were the targets, and it would be completely random, and we would see all of that. So I had, I know I mentioned before, and I still feel the same way, that I'm not willing to support this until I see that policy that says how it's going to be implemented. And to me, it also feels a little bit premature to select the, the company without that, because it seems like we'd have to make sure that they are willing to comply with what we plan to do. Now, maybe they all would, or?
Well, if I could respond to that, both of them actually offer services to help draft a policy, and have pretty extensive experience in doing that. I have seen some of their policies, and again, firsthand in the previous district, that are very clear and very explicit on how the process works, including the randomness of the visits.
I appreciate, I do appreciate that, and I understand that I'm in a tough position because I feel like I can't vote to support something unless I know how it's going to be implemented. And what if? And what if, if I, if we decide to hire this company and then we reach implementation process that I personally don't think is appropriate, that I, how, then how can I vote against it when we've already hired the company? That's my concern, is I want to know that this is actually going to be something that I would support before we engage any outside entity in a contract. And I can't do that unless I know how it's going to be implemented.
So can I ask some clarifying questions? So what you would like to know is what, how they would do it at a high school?
Not, well, yes, but not just, I mean, Ms. Deacon and I attended the presentation, not just how the company plans to do it, but what are our district policies going to be regarding how it's, how it's done, what we will or will not ask the company to do, what will happen if, for example, staff are identified? What will happen, what happens when the items, if items are identified? What happens to the student? Specifically, as we're talking about restorative justice, how is it going to fit into that process? Are we going to be, because I feel like we're going forward under a model of suspension and expulsion that might change dramatically. I hope, I think we all hope it will change dramatically in the next several months, maybe. So there's a lot of questions that I would like to answer before I can say, yes, I would actually support this. I think we all have the intentions that we would do it in a very supportive and appropriate way, but we might get to that point and disagree on what the supportive and appropriate way is.
Well, if I can just respond a little bit to that in terms of restorative justice and respect there, response to any kind of alerts that you might have in this kind of a program would be guided by our policies related to restorative justice and all that, however that develops between now and next year. And I believe the thought is that this wouldn't be something we would be starting until next year, which would then, you know, not be jumping ahead of our change of plans in terms of that.
Mrs. Parker.
Okay, I appreciate Mrs. Cordero's comments. Well, I don't see in front of us as a contract, so I mean, I'm certainly willing to go ahead and take a vote on sort of a direction and which company to maybe develop a contract with that could include elements of how, you know, how the classrooms are chosen and how that is random at school sites. I mean, it's interesting, I've had so much positive feedback from parents about this and those that had concerns when we talked it through, they also were positive about it ultimately. The only concerns I've heard are, have been from some students, and Mrs. Deacon and I talked to a very small group of students at one of our high schools. And interestingly, I think that their biggest concern was that it was random and that it, it didn't target students. And there was sort of a sense that if you're clever enough to get away with it, you should be able to get away with it. And I was listening to this going, okay, well, this is having an opposite effect than I think you intend on my, on my vote here. And, and so that's what I really appreciate about the canines. I mean, this is a huge concern on our campuses and it's a big safety issue. And, and I appreciate that the dogs don't, don't target as long as you're careful about which classrooms and doing that in a random way that you're visiting. I would like to point out that Interquest has dogs that are trained on the commonly abused medications, whereas Kids does not. And so to me, that, that really tips it towards Interquest and trying to develop a contract with Interquest.
Ms. Lamont.
So I want to start off by saying that, first of all, if I had to jump out on a limb, I can probably guess and say with confidence that I believe that this entire board is unified in one thing, that we want to see the number of drugs decrease on our campus. I think where we may differ is the approach. And one of the things that I've considered and contemplated a lot is the alignment between the tool, the policy, and the practice. And to me, those three are not aligned right now. Our, what we heard on January 17th is that there is nothing random about our discipline policies. I heard the word subjective be used multiple times. And so I worry that in moving this initiative forward, we don't have the policy in place. We haven't seen it. And even if the policy, because it does say it needs to be random now, the practice is different on our campuses. And we heard that, we saw the evidence on January 17th. And so for me, I really have had a hard time with this decision because, again, I believe that all of us believe that this is a concern at our schools and we want to see drugs reduced. But I do not feel comfortable voting for a new tool given that the policy and the practice and the tool are not aligned. I had the chance to speak to a small number of students at all of our high schools and LaCuesta. And I heard multiple things. I heard, one, if you don't do it, if you don't bring them, it doesn't really apply. Who cares? Bring the dogs. I heard, well, students are just going to get more clever. That's a given. I also heard students tell me that they do not believe it's going to be random and that students will be targeted. And they proceeded to describe what that would look like and who they would look like. And so for me, again, I respect very much all the opinions on the dais. And I am confident that we all want to see drugs reduced. But I do not feel comfortable voting for this particular new tool given the information that I have in front of me today. So that's where I stand.
I think we're going to treat this more like a conference item instead of an action item. Maybe not necessarily, but, and I'll ask for a motion in a minute. But I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, I don't think any of us want drugs on campus. I mean, that's a no-brainer, right? Drugs do not belong on campus. The number of expulsions related to drugs is high. And I believe that drug, the dogs do function as a deterrent because I do think that they tell students, don't bring this to school. And it may not stop them from using drugs, which is unfortunate, but I think it would stop them from bringing drugs to school. In fact, when Mrs. Parker and I spoke with some students, they told us, well, we bring our drugs to school because we don't want our parents to find them at home. Well, they don't belong on campus, they don't belong, you know, at lunchtime. And so I, and I hear what fellow board members are saying about implementing the policy. And one of my concerns is I've been thinking more about this because I may, I have been a proponent of this and I do think the majority of families in our community likely support it if they believe that it's fairly implemented. But when we talked about restorative discipline, we talked about the fact that if a student is caught with drugs on campus, law enforcement is notified currently. And we've talked about vaguely, and we were developing this, the notion that it may be possible to notify after the fact as opposed to bringing law enforcement on campus at the, at the time that a dog alerts. And I know Dr. Cash was going to explore this a bit more with Mr. Price because I do have some concerns about students who get caught in the net the first time. It's a first time offense and they're immediately arrested. I mean, I don't think that really aligns with the notion of restorative justice and discipline. But obviously, the law requires us to do some kind of notification, even if it's after the fact, but that might be more palatable. So I, I do believe that, that there is the possibility to do this randomly. I think we would have to earn the students' trust by demonstrating that it was truly random. We're not talking about implementing restorative justice this year, next year. We're talking about a pilot at one junior high and then moving forward. So it would be a year or two at least before we could align those policies, I think, with, with the canine detection. So I hear what Mrs. Cordero is talking about, a policy, a policy that delineates exactly how we handle the alerts when the dogs are on campus. And could you address that a little bit more, Mr. Sumter? Because I, I mean, we do have a process in place now when students are caught with drugs. Would it differ from that in your mind?
Well, typically, I mean, are you asking what would happen if a dog alerted on a student's belongings? Because they don't, they don't actually sniff the student, the person. You know, typically, what would happen is the owner of the possessions that the dog alerted on or the desk that the dog alerted on, because they do alert on residual odor as well as an actual substance, you would identify the student that belongs to that or it belongs to. And then that student would be taken to the office to address the issue. Many times, it is a residual odor and it could have been something from the weekend that somebody spilled a bottle of beer on a backpack and that's all it becomes of it. The idea would be to, to find out, though, if there is an issue, some kind of concern that, that we should have or the parent should have about that student and the habits that they might participate in on weekends or the use of drugs or alcohol. It may not result in any disciplinary action because there may not be any actionable offense. But it could very easily and most likely provide some connection to the parent and the child with us and maybe some services that can be offered to the student. But that is handled, once the alert is made, it could be on, you know, a car or a desk or a backpack, that student is identified and then that kind of discussion is held in the office. The handlers will describe to that student in the office what kinds of items the dog alerts on. And then they can have some discussion with the administrator about any time in the past that that student may have come in contact with any of those items to describe or understand how it might have caused the alert. And then a search of the backpack may be necessary, you know, whatever the scope of the search would be would be based on what the incident is. And if nothing is found, if it's just a residual odor, then it does provide the opportunity for the connection of services if necessary.
Okay. Mrs. Cordero.
I had a question about what, about this process too, about what happens. Let's say a student, I'm sorry, a dog alerts on a, on a desk. Does the student, and the students are outside the classroom because they've been taken outside, the dogs are in the classroom. At what point does the student get identified? And what I mean by that is, does some, does the teacher, do they bring the teacher in and say, whose desk is this? And then they go out and get the student and take the student to the office?
That's typically, at least in my experience, how it's worked.
The reason I'm asking the question is, if a student is identified in that, in that manner, it seems to me that it becomes somewhat public that the student is then taken to the principal's office or vice principal. And then should it turn out that it was something that was over the weekend, that wasn't the student's property, that it was residual from the previous student who was in that desk or something like that? The, would the student still have the stigma of having been identified?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, obviously, it is hard to answer without knowing how the other students might respond to that. In a situation like that, certainly the communication to the parent would be such that nothing was found, but, you know, this was an alert, we want to let you know. And maybe that prompts some discussion between them and the family and the parents. But in terms of other students who may have seen the student being, other student being escorted to the office, it's really hard to respond on what kind of stigma that might create or opinion or thoughts the other students would have.
Mr. Herron.
Number one, I'm in favor of doing it. And when you said we may not be doing it this year, but maybe next year, that does get, the next school year, that does give us time to work some of these things out in an orderly process. And I see some things on there where meeting with the school, with the parents, all fit that kind of schedule. I have a hard time understanding this idea of targeting. As far as I'm concerned, we're targeting illegal drugs. We're not targeting children or students. I mean, you go into a room, there's backpacks. If there's an illegal drug, get it off campus. I don't think we, I don't know how you can target students. If you go back to the same room two, three, four, five times in a row because you know there might be something in there, that, I guess you could target a room. Or you could, you know, it just, I don't think, I don't see that. I see it random and I see it working, it's working across the state and across the nation. We don't want drugs on our campus. And how, and I just don't understand how we can not go forward. This is, we have a drug problem on our campuses according to any survey that we've done over the last several years. And it's, when you see the cases that come through with, that we see where kids have drugs and bring them on campus and sell them on campus, as far as I'm concerned, we need to stop that. And if we have another five or six months to work it out, that's great. But we should move forward with a firm. You didn't ask, answer my question, do you have a recommendation? But I think we need to start the process and go forward. We just can't put it off longer.
Mrs. Parker.
I guess this is a question for Dr. Cash because where I'm standing right now, there's not a contract in front of us. So, but I don't know if it's a motion that you need or direction in that I personally would like us to have, to move forward with a contraband detection and deterrent program that, to ask Interquest to develop a contract to make sure that includes language around random searches and how those random searches would specifically be run. And to bring that back to the board for discussion and a vote.
We, you would have had something like that, but at a previous meeting, there was a request to consider additional services and that's why this is before you. So at one point earlier in the year, we had singled one service and so we were focused there. But this is an attempt to provide you with an opportunity to pick between the two services that are available. And if, and it, and the question inherent in your question is, is that we would have to bring back the things that Ms. Cordero has discussed. I don't believe we would be able to address the issues that Ms. Lamont has because of what Mrs. Deacon stated in that, I don't believe we'll have all the restorative justice issues hammered out for several years. But it would include what the, so many of the issues that have been raised. And that would be developed in the, in the contract. We need guidance on which group do you want us to work with, if you want us to work with a group.
Do you need a motion for that guidance or do you want?
Yes, because what we, if that's the case, what we want to do is develop something, bring it back as opposed to be dealing with two groups. They may get tired of us dealing.
Mrs. Cordero.
I would just like to request that we maybe make that in the form of two different motions because I will definitely vote against bringing in this, the whole issue of the dogs at this time. But if the majority of the board votes in favor of doing that, I would certainly like to have input into which group we go forward with. If it's one motion, I will, I will just have to vote no.
Okay, and let me just say that the reason we have two now is because the kids group was at, at multiple CSBA conferences that I've attended. And Mrs. Cordero had raised the issue about female employees. And the kids group was represented by two, two women handlers at that group. And so I, I wanted an opportunity to compare them.
And their, their general manager is female.
Okay, because in the description here, there's no women listed as employees.
I think those were their trainers. Because they do cover a large area and they have such a large number of handlers, I don't think they ought to list them in there.
Because I was impressed by their description of the assemblies that they hire, have prior for parents and students, both during the school day and in the evening for parents so that they can get a sense of what's going to happen. On the other hand, I noticed they're registered and Interquest is licensed. Is that a distinction?
I think it's just terminology, semantics. And they're both with the Department of Justice and Drug Enforcement, so I believe it's the same thing, actually.
And one is more expensive than the other?
Right, and I did talk with them about that directly with Kids, the general manager. And they said that they just believe that their service. And they said that they just believe that their services are of higher quality, their training of their staff is higher quality. They offer more in terms of supervision of the handlers, where higher level staff do come with the handlers at times to check the dogs, to see if they're performing correctly, and that sort of thing. That was not indicated with the InterQuest group. And if I could kind of go back to Mr. Herron's question, and, and request for a recommendation, firsthand experience leads me to lean towards the kids group. Just because of that experience I've had with them directly. Of course, it is a physical question as well to consider. However, in my contact with other districts and schools who use InterQuest, they do speak very highly of them, and are very pleased with the services they get from them. But based on firsthand experience, I would lean towards the kids.
But what about the pharmaceutical issue that Mrs. Parker raised? It appears their dogs are not trained.
Yeah. That, that, I mean, that is a question, and it's a difference between the two. I knew, know that the kids program used to have that in their program, their, their dog training, but began to remove that because of the, for lack of better terms, the turmoil that created for dogs ordering on aspirin, or prescription drugs that were actually prescribed, prescribed to the student, and, and how that disrupted this child's day, the students' day, and the campus, and stuff, for things like that.
So higher fault numbers of false alerts?
True, yes, good way to put it, thank you.
Okay. I see we have a public comment.
We do have a public comment. Lane Wheeler.
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, President of Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Santa Barbara Teachers Association wants to work very closely with the board on this, and the administration, to make sure that this is, if this is the board's inclination, that there is a seamless application. Issues that have been brought to my attention by membership include disruption of class, and instruction, interruption of instruction, and the ability to get students, especially at the secondary level, back on, into the learning mode if the, the dogs do turn up a, a potential situation. Questions were also raised about how the plan, the development plan for implementation, because that is a piece that is, I think you've all grappled with tonight, and that has not yet been addressed, and it certainly needs to be, because we do want to make that a seamless approach also. A number of members have, have asked the question, and I think it's a good one to bring forth to you, is, is the money best spent in this regard? Because these are students who are obviously self-medicating, or under peer pressure. You know, do we, do we need to spend the money in some sort of a counseling program? I, I know we sort of have an either-or situation, that money is exceedingly tight, and I think you're going to deal with that later on the agenda. But once again, it was just a question, and I bringing it forward to you for consideration, because I, I think it is a good question, and one that, that has some merit. We're also very concerned about the issue of false positives, or legal prescriptions that might thus turn up cases, and, and, you know, the situation that would then produce anxiety for a student, or, or staff, or class, in that regard. So there are, we're not making a recommendation. We want to work with the district, if that is the inclination of the, the board and the administration to move forward with this. But we do have some questions that we still need answered, and we would bring that to your, bring that to you tonight for your consideration, and to work forward in a collaborative way with you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we have had a suggestion that we make two motions. Uh, Mrs. Cordero.
I'm sorry, I, I just have one quick question. Both of, both of the companies identify, or indicate that they will conduct evening presentations for parents and community. Do either of them indicate whether they are, have the capabilities of conducting those in Spanish?
That question was not asked, so, you know, it could be something that we would need to determine.
They would, we, we would have it translated. Yeah, we're not going to do it unless they're conducted in the language of our parents.
Okay, can I just recommend that in the future? We ask that of every organization that we're considering hiring, contracting with? If they're going to be, if they're, if part of it is going to be presentations.
Right, and it was just an assumption on my part, that we would provide that even if they didn't have it. That it, it's not appropriate not to have that available.
Yeah. My concern is that that seems like it could be a fairly specialized area, and it would be certainly more appropriate if they have people who are trained in that to conduct the, the translation, especially if, if the parents and the community members are going to be asking clarif, questions for clarification.
Yeah.
Because that may not be material that a general translator would be qualified to.
Right, and I can't say that I, in, in my recollection, anyway, coming across any terminology that would be challenging in that respect. Unless there's a particular name of a, of a substance that is technical, I, I can't think of anything other than that that would be difficult.
Okay.
Ms. Lamone.
And I just wanted to clarify something that was said earlier. I understand that the alignment between tool, policy, and the practice will take a long time to get it to where we want to. But I do think that there were initial questions raised about what other areas besides the classroom would be targeted. And the parking lots were one example, and at least for me, I don't know if there's any other areas. So I think that that's information that would have been helpful. I also think that it's still unclear to me what happens if the positive identification is the teacher in the room. Does the teacher get taken out, and the students don't have the rest of the period? And, I mean, so these are things that I think are important to understand, because I don't actually know what happens if that were to happen, or is it something that is resolved at the end of the day? And I, and I do point out that while this is a deterrent, that's all it is. The students still will follow the same practice that we have in our schools, and that is to be taken into the office, to be questioned, and then involve our sheriff and police department. So I know at our last meeting, we did talk about rethinking what notification would mean. And there's no real clarity on what it means right now, besides what's happening. And lastly, I, I do want to add that I think Ms. Cordero said something important about outreach into the community. And regardless of the vote that's taken tonight, I do feel that this is an important issue that the community needs to work with us. I think that the schools can only do so much. But I think that we need community support, organizational support, to address the core issue, which is helping kids get off drugs. This is just, hopefully, to deter them from bringing them on campus. But we haven't really addressed the fundamental issue, which is kids using drugs. So I think that that would be, those things would be important to consider. And I do, you know, want to outreach and plead to our community to really work with the districts to move forward on how we help students stop using drugs.
Right, and, and in response to that, too, just to add on, I, I attended a meeting yesterday with, with other superintendents of other districts in the, in the county, including some supervisors of the county, who have expressed that same thing as far as getting community agencies and schools connected, so that, more so. Part of the communication or discussion there was that we, as a district here in Santa Barbara, in a way, do have quite a few nonprofits and, and other agencies in our, in our community that are available, and many of whom we do use and have the connections with already. So it is a broader question or concern that is brought up, too, county-wide, in the, in the need to connect our families and our students with those services, and get the services or the, the agencies on board to make that connection happen in a stronger way.
And, and I would just like to reinforce that we are doing things in our schools now to address drugs. I mean, we're working with CADA, we're, I mean, we have our Just Say No programs. We, we talk about it in our health classes. I think there's only so much, as much as we need to develop partnerships within the community, and, and maybe extend the ones that we already have, there's only so much we can do in the schools. And I don't want to just drive the, you know, the problem back out into the community. But on the other hand, we can only control what happens in the schools, which is why I support this. I, it occurred to me, as we were talking about randomness, that parking lot searches aren't random, because they're limited to students who have cars. So, you know, there are those kinds of concerns as well. But, Mrs. Parker, did you have?
I just want to appreciate that, that right now, for a first offense, counseling is the, 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 what students are directed to receive first. And this program, I hope it will deter students from bringing it on campus, but for the students that do bring it to campus, this is a way of identifying students that need help. In terms of teachers, I, I so hope that it never comes up, and maybe Dr. Cash or Mr. Sumter, you can address, if this has come up for you in your previous.
It did not. In my previous district, there's two ways, I think, that, that different districts handle that. One is to, you know, stipulate that staff is not part of the sniff. I call it a sniff, okay? Or to, to be even alerted on in the first place. So that the handlers and dogs are restricted from doing that. The other one is really because we do have a, a drug-free policy in the district. How concerning staff, we don't address that in terms of legal issues or anything, but the advice has been just to notify law enforcement in a situation like that, where an adult or a staff member has been identified.
And whatever administrators on duty would simply take the class if there were an issue that were going on during a class period.
Yes, and it's, it's not even certain that, you know, law enforcement being notified would elicit an immediate response from them, you know.
Okay. I, I would just have to say, I was actually a little surprised to hear that this wouldn't start until next year, if the board gets to a place where we're comfortable with it. Was that the original intention, was for it to be, I mean, it's February.
Last, last, last fall, no. But at this time of year, with what we want to do in preparing the school community for the introduction of this, it would be, I think, inappropriate to just launch it in the middle of the school year. We're, we're going to want to tell parents about it, tell kids about it, demonstrate it, answer as many questions as we can before we would have a dog spend a moment on a campus.
Okay. So you're looking for direction from us for, for one of these two companies? And regardless of whether we go ahead or not, that's in play if, if later we make a decision to go ahead on it. And I will just say that, based on my personal interactions with the kids group, and my observation of InterQuest with Mrs. Cordero, the kids group is less, has less of a law enforcement presence or profile. And you've had personal experience with them, but they're more expensive, so, and they don't.
They don't do prescription.
Prescription drugs, so.
Well, if you want two motions now, I'll go ahead and make a first motion, and that is that the board, I'll move to approve a contraband detection and deterrent program for the 2012, 2013 school year.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I have a, a few things. One is, we talked about that this won't target students, because, and clearly, I think, nobody wants to target any particular group. Well, I don't know, maybe that's a little too charitable. But I don't think anybody here wants to target any particular students. However, we don't want to target any particular students with our expulsion and suspension policies either, and yet, we see that in some cases, it's a five-to-one ratio for certain students, as opposed to others, even without that intent. So the intent doesn't have to be there in order, in order for the impact to appear. And I think that's definitely a concern that I have. I, I think I hear it from Ms. Lamone. It's definitely something that I've heard from students, who, especially those students who are used to being the target, and are in those five-to-one ratios of suspensions and expulsions. So my concern is, I, I, I just feel like we're being unrealistic, especially in light of the data that we have regarding other policies, and how they affect certain groups, to think that without really hammering out the details of this, we can project whether it's going to have a disproportionate impact or not. The other thing is that we said, that I raised the question of what would happen to a student's reputation, perhaps, if they're identified, and identified, period, even if they turned out to be guilty of having the material. But, but especially if they've turned out to be innocent of, of having any contraband. You mentioned that if a, a staff member is targeted, law enforcement would be noticed, notified. My concern would be that for, especially for a teacher, but probably for any staff member, even if they turned out to be innocent, there could be irreparable harm done to their reputation in an academic environment, a school environment, to be targeted for drug possession. Would be a really hard accusation to overcome. And then, if, you know, I think there are many more things we could be doing to help our students. I think if we were doing enough in our schools already, we wouldn't need to have the dogs. So clearly, we're not doing enough, because it's still there. So I, I just feel like we should, rather than going down this road, we should be looking at what more kinds of things could we do to, rather than just to prove, to deter the students from bringing drugs to campus, what more could we be doing to deter students from using drugs, period? Because I'm, the, the dog issue just deters them from bringing them to school. It doesn't address any of the underlying issues as to why they're engaging in this behavior in the first place. So those are my concerns, those are some of the reasons why I would, I, I will be voting no on this.
Mrs. Parker.
And I will just say that my view is that we will have the flip happen, which is that right now, with humans, we see bias in who, in, in targeting, and who, whose backpack gets searched, and, you know, what time of day, and where are they when backpacks are searched. And this gives the opportunity, if we are random about where the dogs go, the dogs aren't looking at the kids. They are only alerting on backpacks. And so it, it takes one more opportunity for bias out of the equation. So my hope is that we will actually see, because frankly, from what I know of high school students, we, we should not be seeing what we see in terms of drugs and alcohol, the difference between ethnicities. We shouldn't be seeing that. And so I really hope that this will make a change, and that it'll be fairer.
Well, I have to say, that was my perspective after talking to the students that I spoke to. Because as it happened, the students we spoke to, and they were invited to come and speak to us when we were at Santa Barbara High, were not necessarily those students that you might think of as at-risk students. And they as much as said, "Everybody's using drugs, everybody's bringing it. Some people are getting caught, some people aren't." And I think this levels the playing field, and I actually do think that we will see those numbers change as a result of the use of dogs. And ultimately, I hope, and I, and we've been told, that what, what actually happens is that kids stop bringing them to school, because they don't want to get caught.
Well, I just want to quickly say, I, I understand that, and I, I hope that that is what occurs if we go forward. My concern is that the dogs are not the ones handing out the punishment. They just identify the students. We know that the punishments are not meted out necessarily the same, especially when some students have families with resources for lawyers, et cetera, and some students don't. So even though the dogs won't be identifying the students, the person who's eventually giving out the punishment will. So I, I just don't see how this addresses that issue. And that's why I really would love to see the policy brought before us before we vote on whether or not to do this.
Okay, point taken. All right, I think it's time to call for a vote. We have a motion and a second. Do you want to repeat your motion, Mrs. Parker, just so that we're clear, since we've had some discussions since then?
My motion, my motion was to approve a contraband detection and deterrent program for the 2012, 2013 school year.
And Mr. Herron, you seconded that, is that right? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes three, zero.
No.
No.
Two, three. I'm sorry, three, two. A second motion, about which organization we want to give our staff direction to?
And I guess this may be a harder discussion. For me, it does come down to the fact that we have just, I know, huge issues with. with, um, prescription drug abuse. Students with prescriptions, uh, are to have those prescriptions in the health offices at our campuses. There is no reason for students to have, uh, over the, either prescription or over-the-counter medication in their backpacks. And so to me, that leans towards InterQuest, but I am certainly open to what my fellow board members have to say.
Mr. Heron?
In our proposal, one is $600 a day, one's $410. Can you translate that into a monthly fee?
Well, that would be based on how many visits.
Do you have an idea?
They recommend, uh, two visits a month per site. That's, and initially they say three, just to get the program kicked off. But on a regular basis, more or less two visits per site, so, um, you know, 1,200 then per site, per month. For one program, and then 820 for the other.
I thought I read here where you do two or three schools in the day that they come.
That's a possibility too, and they, they could spend the morning at one site and do the afternoon at the other site.
It wouldn't be 400 times three, times.
Yes, I, I believe, um, it's a visit to the district, not necessarily a visit to the school.
I, I was told they did multiple school sites in a, in a day.
Yes, typically they do. And one other thing too, in regards to the two programs, um, InterQuest has stated that they would do the three high schools and at the, at their rate, but the continuation school would be an add-on for free.
Again, do we have a monthly estimate?
Well, I'm trying to do the math quickly in my head.
I just.
Depends on how many days.
I just quickly did the math. If it's 1,200 at three, that's 3,600 a month for nine months, so we're talking about 32,400? A year?
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm not sure that's actually accurate, because what I had been told was they do multiple school sites in a day. So you might have two schools in one day, so that would be $600 for two schools in one day, twice a month.
I think that's counted as one visit to the district, so rather than two separate visits.
A month or 820 a month.
Yeah. Well, my recollection is when we first brought one of the two, and I don't remember which one it was. That it was a contract for a full year of somewhere around $16,000.
That's what I thought.
Both companies have indicated too that, that you could place a cap on it, and then they would structure their visits to fall into that cap.
Well, are these, be you set in concrete, or are they?
Pretty much. I've, I've had some discussion with them about that, and, uh, yeah, both have, uh, offered information to justify why they charge what they do.
Would they be, would they be open or receptive to just coming once a month, say?
We can structure that with them, and that could be part of the contract with them in discussion.
So we can basically spend as much as we want, depending on how many days we want them to come. Ms. Lamon?
Well, I think, um, I don't have strong feelings towards either one, but I, I do think Ms. Parker raises a good point about prescription medicine. And we all know, we've read the research, that it's on the rise. I mean, locally, we had our media conduct a survey and analysis of prescription medicine, how it's used. And so to me, um, that may be something to consider. However, you, I think, Mr. Sumter mentioned something earlier about the fact that it is more problematic as far as.
Well, in terms of, of being something that, you know, you could alert on a, on a student for possession of a prescription that belongs to them, which just hadn't been checked into the office. Um, in a situation like that, it does become disruptive for that student when they do have a prescription that they're supposed to be taking daily, but just had not done appropriately at school. And normally what would be done in a situation like that is if it's their prescription, go through the process of getting checked in, notify the parents, that kind of thing. There typically would not be a disciplinary consequence for something like that.
But, but I mean, I guess, so a dog goes in the classroom, there's a student with prescription medicine who's checked it with the office, the dog will still catch that, and the student will be taken to the office, or how does, I mean, does, does?
Students should not have the medicine with them. The student is required to check it in at the health office.
Okay, okay.
With the, with the prescription from the physician.
I would think that that's something that we really stress in the assemblies prior to any visits, is that, you know, this is what happens if, if you forget to check in your medication at the office.
Right.
Okay, um, well, do we have a motion on one of the two organizations?
I'm sorry, this is not a motion, it's just a question, or maybe a comment. I, the, if the issue, if the, if the price, if the fees are going to influence, yeah, I'm not even sure how to make this comment because it's so contrary to what my position is, but it seems if we're gonna have people come in once a month, I, I can't, I, I, I mean, I don't even understand how that could possibly be effective. Once they've been there, the students know they're not coming back. So they just bring the drugs after the students come, I mean, after the dogs come. So it.
What's very unusual about what's happening is the, the amount of discussion that's occurring publicly regarding this. In most every other place in which this occurs, all of those details typically are not discussed in public because of the reason you've just stated. Like what school they're going to when, how many visits they're gonna have, um, because of exactly why. In order for it to truly be random, it must be random.
Mrs. Parker?
I guess that begs the question, then, Dr. Cash, whenever we started the program, we would probably want to have it not be once a month to start, so.
I would agree.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to, um, explore a contract with InterQuest for contraband detection and deterrent services. Understanding that both InterQuest and, you know, uh, both of the companies made it really clear that it's the, it's actually the school district that just, that determines where, um, where the dogs go. And so, uh, understanding that when that contract comes back to us, that it will include a district, a full district explanation of how the searches will become, uh, be conducted randomly at sites, and how, uh, students and teachers will be, uh, I don't wanna say processed, but will, uh, will be handled if there's a problem.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Wait, I'm sorry, can you, I, I missed the, kind of the last part of the motion, so can you just maybe restate the motion?
I move that the district explores a contract with InterQuest for contraband detection and deterrent services, with the understanding that when that contract comes back to the board for approval, that it include a full explanation from the district on how the searches will be conducted randomly, and how students and teachers will be handled if there is a problem.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if you had included teachers. Okay, okay. Well, I didn't vote because I wasn't sure of the motion, so.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a vote again.
Okay, sorry.
All right? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Can I give a little bit more direction? I think we've stated pretty clearly that we want some kind of written policy to come back to us, and I know that the organizations both provide assistance in that. I would also like, um, and I've asked for this previously when we were discussing it earlier, for all of the assistant principals and/or principals to come together in some practice sessions, working with the handlers under kind of a mock scenario, so that this is implemented identically at all of the schools. Because I wanna make sure that each assistant principal, or whoever is accompanying the handlers, is doing the exact same thing at each school. And I think this is where, where we get into making sure that it's random, that it, that it's done appropriately. And one more thing, I wanna make sure that, because now we have until the fall of, of 2012, that we really explore this issue of notification. Because I, I do, I mean, our concern is, we, we're doing this as a deterrent, and I wanna make sure that we're not bringing kids into, um, the, kind of, the law enforcement system in, in the way that we don't intend that to happen. I think in our model of restorative discipline, um, you know, we wanna intervene in appropriate ways, and so if, if, uh, the law requires us to do it one way and not another, we need to find that out so that we can do what we think is best in terms of, of how that's handled in terms of notification, and how the student interacts with law enforcement if they are identified with drugs. Any other direction, board members?
I just wanted to, um, maybe request if, if it's feasible to do it. As we're developing the policy, the implementation policy, to get input from community members and organizations, et cetera, beyond ELAX and D-LAX and PTSOs. Because I think those are, those, um, folks are very aware of what goes on in the campus, and they're very, um, involved, but they often represent a very particular, uh, component of the school community. And so I, I think we also need to hear from those other families out in the community that may not be participating in, in ELAX or PTSOs, et cetera.
Can, can you help me with that? Who you would like me to talk to, or?
Well, I think, for example, we still have, we still have representatives from Pueblo in Santa Barbara, even though they close their office.
Okay.
I think there are people, um, we could certainly work, I mean, even, I think we're having our, a meeting tomorrow with the, um, Youth Violence Prevention Committee. There are, there are a number of people on that committee who represent organizations that I think would be very useful to work with. Esperanza, if they're available. Even Just Communities, even some of our own, um, staff, I think, um, who work with our at-risk students. But I think the community would be some of those organizations that I've mentioned, and we might be, even be able to come up with more.
Good. And I agree, because the more we get the word out to everybody, the more it works as a deterrent.
Well, and I just wanted to echo, um, what you said, Ms. Deegan, about the practice and what's really happening in the notification. And I know we started that conversation on January 17th with, um, our council, and I would love follow-up, perhaps even in a board brief about if there is any wiggle room to the current practice, and what the school's understanding is.
I, I, I am working on that, so I have done everything I can up to this point, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cash.
The, the easy way to solve this whole thing is get, get the message out, don't bring drugs to schools. And, well, you won't have any of these issues.
Okay, we have taken more than 15 minutes on this item. But I think that's important, because it's something that I think we all care about, and we wanna do it right, so I'm glad we did. All right, moving on to E2, Approval of Administrative Services Agreement with the Public Agency Retirement Services and Resolution 2011-12-35. Public agency supplementary, supplementary retirement, I am better known as PARs, I should've just stopped with PARs. Mrs. She, uh, Dr. Cash, would you like to start this off?
Well, I, what I'd like to say is we do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:50 regarding the Peabody Charter renewal, and I, it looks like there might be a few Peabody participants out there.
Thank you for alerting, although I've seen the blue sweatshirt, so I should've made that connection. Very good.
I'm wondering if we could move to that. Being a former Peabody Panther myself, I can appreciate that some of them might need to get some sleep tonight. Not just the kids.
Good point. Okay, I'm going to close our regular session, and I'm going to open our public hearing on F2, Public Hearing and Discussion of Provisions of Charter Renewal Request of Peabody Charter School.
We also have Paul Minnie here, who is our council, as well as Peabody Charter School Council. Welcome, Paul, to the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Good to see you. And, um, we do have Dana Sedan, who is gonna be, I believe, kicking off the presentation for Peabody Charter Schools Charter Renewal.
Well, board members and Dr. Cash, uh, good evening. I am Dana Sedan, I'm the interim principal of Peabody Charter School. And it's Valentine's Day, and yet we still have lots of people who've shown up for it today. It's also Peabody Renewal Day, Peabody, Peabody Charter Renewal. And I want to, uh, take this opportunity to thank, uh, Dr. Cash and, uh, Dr. Miller, Kate Ford, who cannot be here, and Paul Minnie, who have been working so closely together to get this charter renewal done. So I appreciate all the work, uh, that's been going on with that. Thank you for this opportunity to give you a glimpse into the heart and soul of our school. Peabody is about the charter, the MOU, the FUA, the strategic plan, the test scores. But above all, Peabody, uh, the Peabody story is really about the people. And as you can see this evening, even though it is Valentine's Day and it's almost eight o'clock, we have students, we have teachers, we have parents, we have board members who still came to show up, 'cause it, that's really what Peabody is about. Okay. There we go.
That would be good.
So, um, we set our sights high with our vision, as you can see, the exemplary K6 school, and we focus on students. And we weren't shy, we called out the areas of academic excellence, full potential and well-being, and service to the school and community. Our strategic plan guides our efforts in every way so that we get to that state of being exemplary. And we're grateful to Heather Stefanski, who is here, um, in the community today, who is a board member and a parent, uh, who provided expert guidance on writing the strategic plan and ensuring that the entire community had input and responsibility. First and foremost, Peabody is all about academic excellence, and it's reflected in many ways. Teachers and staff who work tirelessly to help students achieve and improve, um, are at the center of this endeavor. Our API score for 2010, 2011 was 883, which was up 12 points from the year before. We continue to make gains in all areas and met targeted goals for all subgroups, and were able to make safe harbor even with our ELLs and, um, with our students who are socially-economic disadvantaged. Our overall AYP goal for language arts was 71.2, which is above what was required. And for math, it was 79.3, which is about 10 points higher than what was required. This year, we are targeting all of our energies and focus, focuses to raise kids from the basic level to proficient, as well as meeting all the needs of the other kids who are at risk. And, uh, also in science, our kids got 77%, which was also very successful. There is a premium put on meeting the needs of students and preparing them for higher-level learning through meaningful experiences and rigorous instruction. Teachers here tonight, and we've got quite a few of them, we have Shannon Bodett, we have, um, Sh, Kristy Schaefer, Linda Sterling, Marco Silva, Julie Erickson, Eileen Cravioda, we've got lots and lots of, and Amy Zukwitz in the back, so lots of, uh, teachers showed up. And actually, the teachers have multiple roles, they're also parents and also board members, and that's the same of, um, parent board members as well, so, um, multiple roles that they're playing. So, uh, the teachers are focusing on English language development, real-time personalized math instruction, project-based learning, a lab approach to science, as well as professional development opportunities that are prioritized to meet the challenges, uh, the, of these, of students, the challenging needs of students. All teachers are empowered to participate in the planning and implementation of an instructional program, being part of 10 committees, which I will outline in a minute. Peabody has earned the honor of being a California distinguished school, that was in 2009, and, uh, we just keep on getting better and better. In terms of curriculum and, and instruction for this year, we've been focusing a lot on English language development, which we felt was a weaker area, and we're hoping that, um, by having a strong program put in place, that we will be able to better serve the needs of our English language learners, as well as RTI, where we are focusing on, uh, student progress on a regular, regular basis. We are doing, taking steps, uh, to, with the Cal, California Common Core standards. I have teachers who are going to training with Tim Duar at UCSB. Actually, eight, 10 more are starting another program with him, so we're doing a lot of that. I had 15 teachers go for ELD training this year. And, um, let's see, I have other teachers working with Ellen Barger on math Common Core standards, and we have teachers participating in GATE training for differentiated instruction. And we also had the sixth-grade teachers, uh, go with Elise Simmons for the Avid training. And in terms of teacher empowerment, lots of different. And in terms of teacher empowerment, lots of different committees are available for them, they can be involved in leadership, the ELD committee, the RTI committee, the math committee, the GATE committee, a social committee, and they also participate in regular grade-level meetings and RTI meetings. So Peabody is not, we recognize that academics are important, but it's not the only thing that's important for the child. We want to develop the whole child. So we have a program that is rich with experiences inside and outside of the class, of the classroom, that allow children to express themselves and to be challenged in a variety of ways. Field trips and speakers are planned to enhance the learning experience that kids have in the classroom and also to add depth and dimension to the curriculum. All students have regular classes in ceramics, music, PE and drama. They get three PE classes a week, 45 minutes each, and then there are lots of activities after school to address the needs of different kids, Odyssey of the Mind, robotics, Upstarts, Dance, the Spelling Bee Talent Show, Battle of the Books, there's lots and lots of different things that are going on. And in addition, students also participate in five hours of community service a year. Academic excellence service and striving to have every child reach his or her potential do not just happen, it takes a concerted effort across the school. And when creating the stra, the strategic plan, we identified three core elements as essential to our, our vision, which were exceptional people, strong financial health, and a safe, clean, and updated facility. And people are at the heart of each of those. Oops, I think I missed a thing here, let me see. Nope, okay, I missed a spot here. Okay. So, and people, I think maybe it's at the next one? No? Let's see. Okay. So people are at the heart of all three. Five groups make up the team for success, and these five groups encompass hundreds and hundreds of people. You see many Peabody people here today, and their smiles and their confidence, you can see that, too. From the Board of Directors, we have here a former board chair, Dr. Glenn Miller, and the current board chair, Elaine Gibson, and they govern the school. And we also have other board members, if you wouldn't mind standing up so we can identify you as well. So almost all, Laurel Lyle from the cafeteria, so pretty, almost everybody is here. And Nancy Dow, who is our Director of Fiscal Services and is also the treasurer. To administration, I have Lauren Rodriguez, who is the interim assistant principal here tonight, as well as myself, and then the parents, and you can all wave, all of you are parents at Peabody. And teachers, teachers, would you please stand as well, just so that we can see, so you can see? Thank you. And we, and of course, the most important contingency are the students, 750 of them students, would you please stand up? And thank you for coming. And Sophie in the background, thank you. Okay. So you can see why Peabody, why we're so proud. At least 15% of parents have taken what we call pivotal leadership roles at Peabody, raising hundreds of thousands of dollars every year, and giving untold hours of volunteering in classroom, going on field trips, serving on key committees, and lending their considerable personal and professional expertise. These are most, but not all of the ongoing committees at the school. We have parents here tonight who are, again, it's board members, the PTSO chair, and other officers, the parent leaders for different major committees. And again, unfortunately, because of it being Valentine's Day and being late, so many of these people had other commitments, but they said to say hello. Financial health is key, of course, to any school being successful, and a lit, a charter school literally cannot exist without expert fiscal management. And we are so fortunate to have Nancy Dow as our fiscal, our Director of Fiscal Services, because she is an integral part of the financial success of our school. Maintaining reserves of 15% in order to withstand the hardships imposed by the state in terms of trigger cuts and deferrals, Peabody is timely and accurate in its reporting, working closely with district officials, majete. And we are also proud of clean audit findings every year and our continuing strong relationship with our two employee groups, even in the face of ongoing dismal state crisis. In terms of facility, again, we're working very closely with Santa Barbara Unified School District personnel and our facilities committee, and we are committed to maintaining a beautiful and historic campus. And these are some of the projects that we've been working on this year, and at the end here, at the bottom, you can see, these are the big plans that are happening with Santa Barbara School District assistance, and we are so grateful for that. The big K building is in dire need, so it's fantastic, and the cafeteria upgrade, and the sixth-grade bathrooms and moving the portable, so we're very, very happy with all of those things. Regular campus cleanup days and a strong sense of pride and ownership underscore the entire Peabody community. Every year, we have kindergarten parents come on who want to redo the whole kindergarten yard and, you know, focusing their energies, they've got big plans of what they would like to do. But to keep Peabody a great place to learn and grow and work and play, that is what we intend to do with facilities. Looking ahead to 2012, 2013, we are very happy to have Damian Barnett coming on board with us. We are going to continue focusing on academic excellence for our English language learners and readying the school for transition to California Common Core Standards and preserving, continuing to preserve our financial health. We are very excited about the charter renewal and our plans for going forward, and in fact, let's see, the Peabody is, community is devoted to ensuring the highest level of technology. We have been inspired again by what's happening at the district level in terms of technology, and we hope to tag along with that somehow, or do some similar things. All of these goals will be achieved under the leadership of our new executive director, Damian Barnett, beginning July 1st. Okay? So, we are so proud of our school, and I've shared with you just some of the reasons why we can't hide our Peabody, our Panther pride. As you can see, it really is the people and the teamwork and the dedication to excellence. And we are grateful for our charter and for the support from Santa Barbara Unified School District and the board. And in the past five years, you have challenged, supported, and helped us in many ways, and we will count on you for that guidance in the future. And we conclude our presentation with a short video, and it actually is about a four-minute video, but we'll just go for about a minute. So thank you, thank you again, for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Sedan.
This video was produced by Polly Pelley, who's a parent at our school, and it's as part of a fundraising effort to preserve the Peabody experience.
It's, just start the audio, the video was working before the meeting. I swear you it was.
It's very high-tech.
It is, too high-tech.
Come on, everybody, that's.
I'm sorry.
Well, you know what? I just want to mention to the, to the audience, to the public and to the board, that we're not scheduled to act tonight on this. You're coming back on March 13th for the final decision, and on the 28th, we will be receiving a report from the district, so I'm sure by then we can get the video going and, and see it. And I would just like to thank all of you for coming out. We do have a few public comments?
We do. We have Jason Spivak, Spivak, sorry about that, and Sophie, so I don't know if they want to.
We will fix that microphone for you, Sophie. And so what will happen, Sophie, is you'll have three minutes, and when you have 30 seconds left, I'll interrupt you and let you know.
Okay.
All right.
So I am a student council member and a kid, and I love Upstarts, and it's just really awesome, so, yeah. So, woo.
Sophie, can you sing part of the song you want to sing?
Awkward. Not really.
Are you good there?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I'll, I'll take the other 30 seconds, or three minutes will be done here, but just want to thank Dr. Cash and the board and the staff for all the work you're doing on Peabody's behalf. I also would like to thank the charter committee here from Peabody. I know that Ms. Sedan has named those folks, including Dr. Miller, and specifically Nancy Dow for her work on helping to keep us fiscally solvent. I'm a parent and a board member at Peabody, but speaking to you now as a parent of three Peabody kids, we moved all three of our kids from private school a couple of years back to Peabody. It has been an overwhelmingly positive educational experience. My, my children are thriving as students at Peabody, and Peabody is absolutely thriving within the community, and despite the very significant budgetary challenges that we face, and we know that you are dealing with on every front, we are very enthusiastic about our future. We appreciate your support and hope that you are able to work with us to get the charter approved and put another five wonderful years of Peabody in place. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board, I'm sure we have some questions. Mrs. Parker, you want to start?
Well, I'll just make some quick comments, and first of all, thank you all so much for being here tonight, and I'm excited to go through the renewal process again. It's wonderful always to have this opportunity for the school community to come forward, talk to the board, talk to district staff, and it's really, in a lot of ways, especially for Peabody, a celebratory time, so thank you. I know that district staff have issues that they're working through with the Peabody Charter Renewal Team, and I expect you to keep working through those and to come back to us with revisions. So what we're seeing here is obviously a draft. I will call out two areas that I'm looking forward to seeing because they weren't in this, and there's a referral to Appendix B, which is the Charter School Articles of Incorporation, Corporate Bylaws and Conflicts Code, and Appendix C, the Sample Enrollment Contract, Enrollment Timeline, and Enrollment Information Sheet, because as board members, over, for me at least, over the past four years, those are the areas that again and again have had the Peabody community come to me as a board member of the district and say, this is where we have issues with the Governance Council, the fact that it doesn't go out to a broad election, that the Governance Council essentially keeps renominating its members, and Sun Brown Act issues, and then for the enrollment and waiting list issues that it, it has a tendency to disadvantage students of color, students, second language learners, immigrant children. So those are particular areas that I'm going to be looking at as those come forward from Peabody and from the district.
Mr. Heron.
Dr. Cash mentioned he was a Panther. I have to say, I was one 64 years ago.
Mine was a little bit later than that.
Yeah, so I think you won't find many that.
48, 49, and 50. I guess I have to recuse.
I guess I have to recuse myself, because I'm probably biased, but, so I'm looking forward to, I, I want to say that the last two years, you just had your lottery February 3rd, and the lottery last year, I think, has resolved some of the questions Mrs. Parker mentioned. It was done very fairly, very nicely, across the board. Everybody who wanted to come to Peabody in the boundaries of the Peabody School had equal chance to get in. I was very happy to see that all the kindergarten applications got accepted. So the fact that the last two years, I think you have solved some of the problems, and I'd like to see that timeline spelled out in this, in this document or guidelines, just to make sure we are, we still have them, but I thought that was a great, great improvement. So thank you very much.
Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I wasn't a Panther, but, but I was a Panther parent of two, two students, one of whom was the student body president, so I, I can kind of be an honorary Panther. But I just wanted to say that I also thought these were, this was a very interesting document. I mean, in terms of charters that we've seen, I think this is a really extensive, well-written charter, but I also was interested in those two appendices that you mentioned, especially for me, Appendix C, because I agree with Mr. Heron that I think a lot of that got worked out last year, but I would like to see the documentation so we know, I know exactly what's going to be in place. So I, I'm hoping, I'm optimistic that those will just reflect the process that has, I think, evolved and, and really improved, but I, I would like to see that. So I think that we're going to see that as it comes forward further, and I'm optimistic that this will be a fairly smooth process, so thank you.
Mrs. Limong.
Well, I'm not going to repeat too much, but as my colleagues have said, I am looking forward to the enrollment. I also want to recognize how hard you've worked to work out some of the kinks, because they're not always easy. And so I know that it's been a lot of work on behalf of the parents and the board and the administration there to work out some of the kinks. And for me, I'm also personally looking at, at this to kind of read how we can ensure that some of the kinks won't come back, even though they've been resolved at this time. And I know Nancy does good work, so I trust her financials. And yeah, thank you for all being here and all your support and your hard work.
Well, I'll just ditto much of that, and I did have, have a couple of questions for staff, things that we would like to see in the report coming forward. I know that the charter has asked us to increase the enrollment size of the school, and so I think we're going to want to see a financial analysis of how that might impact us. And, and I know that Peabody essentially contracts with us for special education or works with us, and there was a discussion about pairing its proportional share of district-wide encroachment, and so I think just some, a little bit of discussion about that would be helpful for us as well, as we're out pinching our pennies these days. But thank you again for coming. I'm actually a Panther parent, but not a Peabody Panther. My son went to a college whose mascot was the Panthers, so there's lots of Panthers out there. And for you students, you could go on to be Panthers for your, your whole school career if you'd like, so. With that, I think we come to a close of our, our public hearing.
Yes, I have no comments, except to commend the Peabody staff. It's a pleasure working with them. It's been fantastic working with Dr. Miller, and look forward to a long, long time visiting Peabody, so.
Okay, we officially close our public hearing. Thank you, and we will see you, I'm sure, soon. Okay, board, without further ado, I'm going to turn us to PARs. We'll wait until things get a little quieter. Okay, Ms. Jete, would you like to, do we have any public comment on this item? All right.
Thank you. Regarding this board item, we have a Public Agency Retirement System, PARs, is a free-for-service, a fee-for-service, sorry. Boy, that's a big distinction. A fee-for-service company that specializes exclusively in governmental retirement plans. The primary objective of a retirement incentive is to increase and accelerate the retirement rate over and above the natural nutrition in order to facilitate specific district objectives, as such as personnel restructuring and fiscal savings. In order to achieve the desired result, the district must obtain a certain level of participation. If the required level of participation is not achieved, the district may withdraw the incentive. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have, hopefully, that I can answer for you.
Mrs. Limong.
I just have one quick question, a guesstimate on how many employees might fall into this category versus.
I can tell you in each category how many are available to participate. Certificated, there are 203, certificated management, 10. Classified non-management, 240. Classified management, 9. So a total of 462.
Thank you.
Mrs. Parker.
I'll try to be quick, too. The attachment that goes with this doesn't lay out what I think we've seen as individual board members, which is the specifics of this, like you have to be an employee for five years in the district, you know, that it, it's retroactive to July 1st, 2011, through June 30th, 2012, and so it'll. And so, I'm sure that will be coming out if we approve this in both individual meetings that Human Resources will be putting out with employees. But I just wanted, real quick, could you give a sample? So, what would this mean if a staff member decided to do this? Beautiful. Thank you.
So, here's a scenario. What I did is I took the total health insurance for this retiree at the level of an HMO III, covering HMO III plus two dental, two people on dental, and also two on vision. So, it would be, and I added 10%, which could be right about in the range, or maybe a little low, unfortunately, for the increase for 12, 13 on the health insurance. So, that would come to $15,517 for the, that's an annual rate. So, if Jane Doe earns $74,062, that's her final pay. She will receive 75% of her final pay over five years, or $11,109 an annual. Her monthly, over, if she chooses the five-year payout, there's 14 choices, so she would receive $926 a month. As you can see on the top line, the monthly insurance is $1,552.
I'm sorry, so can you, when you say that the monthly insurance is 1,000, so...
That's what they would pay monthly for their insurance. So, I broke it down as an annual. Insurance is $15,517 annual, but the payout annually is $11,109.
So, essentially, it would help their insurance?
Oh, it would help very much, their insurance. And this is based, as I said, on the five-year payout, but they can do numerous of different types of payouts.
So, normally, if a teacher just retired right now without this incentive, they would be paying $1,552 a month for their insurance, and they would get nothing to help that.
That's correct.
So, this is, if they chose this particular plan and they had this particular pay level, they would get an extra $11,000 a year.
That's correct. And this is probably...
For five years.
That's right. This is probably the best retirement plan that we have put out there in a while. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we did $25,000 one time.
Yeah, this is huge.
I was at a SPTA Rep Council meeting, and I can tell you, they were hungry for details on this. There were a number of people who expressed interest, but they were concerned, especially if they weren't close in age to receiving Medicare, because they were worried about the cost of health insurance. So, this is really helpful information. There were two other things they were concerned about. One was the timeframe, because they basically have two months between now, between today...
Actually, as a result of meeting this week, that timeframe was requested to be shorter.
By SPTA?
That's correct.
That's interesting, okay. They also wanted to be able to talk to STRS folks, the State Teachers Retirement System folks, and even though we're not, we don't hire people that do that, the Santa Barbara County Education Office does, and I think it would be very reasonable for us to host a workshop here in our district office so that people could come in and find out if they retired at 62 or 64. With this incentive, financially, what's going to be most advantageous to them?
We plan to work with SPTA to put out a framework that will include large group meetings with PARS, individual meetings with PARS, individual meetings with STRS, individual meetings with PERS.
That's right, because the classified employees, and some of the certificated belong to PERS also.
Yes.
We do have one public comment.
Lane Wheeler.
Lane Wheeler, SPTA. We did look at this the other day. It was a first reveal. I was able to bring some information to the January Rep Council with conversations with Dr. Cash about the potential for this to come. So, we have been trying to give our membership a slight, I guess, heads-up that there could be a potential for some program coming. We just got this information the other day. The devil's always in the details. We're hoping that PARS is the premier provider of this service and that they have been fully vetted. I know that when I sat in the audience, when you all were looking at search firms, I turned up one just with a Google search that sort of stupefied me that hadn't been sieved out in the process. But once again, I request that, you know, that you have a reasonable assurance that this is the premier provider of the service. We did look at the possibility of shortening the time for membership to respond. We would like to see it longer, but we also understand that the board's under some extreme, and extreme is, I think, too mild of a word, circumstances to look at the budget and to make budgetary decisions that will impact our entire membership. And in order to try to collaborate with the district in the most, I think, collegial manner in terms of preserving positions, we did think that if it were shortened somewhat, that that might allow you to make better decisions and would allow us to be able to look at contingency language that would best serve our membership and the students of Santa Barbara, which is really our main goal. And the other aspect of this is, as Ms. Deacon mentioned, our memberships are crying out for some assistance on healthcare. It's been five years since we've had any kind of a raise, and in that period of time, healthcare costs have gone from, in many cases, $0 to over $650 a month. We have less money in our pockets now than we did five years ago, and far, far, far more responsibilities and obligations, and the cost of living has just increased dramatically. So, while we think this might be one more method to approach things, we have been letting our membership know that there won't be any other retirement incentives. This is not truly a retirement incentive. This is retirement annuity, slightly different. So, you know, we like to be in front of the information, not behind it. So, would ask that full collaboration be with the district on this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One more quick question. How many people need to participate for us, to make sense for us? Was it 50?
Well, it's 50 certificated, but if you add up all of the ones that we need to have in each category, we would need 92. But it could come all from certificated or come all from classified, right?
We'll need the minimum amount from each unit in order to offer it to each individual unit.
Okay. Well, we hope the teachers are talking to each other about the benefits of this passing.
And they will be sending out a packet to every eligible person, so they'll get a lot of information as soon as I let them know tomorrow.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the Administrative Services Agreement with Public Agency Retirement Services and Resolution Number 2011/2012-35, the Public Agency Supplementary Retirement Plan.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. E3, vote on 2012 California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly Election Ballot. We have five minutes to talk about this, but I doubt we could do this even faster. Is everyone familiar with this item?
There's just one candidate, isn't there?
That's right.
I move we vote for him.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. E4, approval of return to a seven-member Measure H 2008 Citizens Oversight Committee. I believe Ms. Kiani is going to give us the details on this one.
Well, Board, the Measure H 2009, excuse me, 2008 Parcel Tax Oversight Committee and the Measure I Oversight Committee are now reaching the point where we will be, we need to have new members come onboard. And this was an opportunity to call to your attention the fact that currently we have a nine-member Measure H Committee, and even though we are not under the same obligations as the bond oversight committees which follow Prop 39, we certainly have, we have patterned those committees after Prop 39. And one of the things that has been of concern is that we have multiple committees now with parcel tax oversight and other committees in the district, and the challenge becomes making sure that we have quorums for these committees. So, we thought we would revisit this as we are on the eve of bringing new names to you at one of the next board meetings, and wanted to revisit the idea of moving back to a seven-member committee.
Thank you. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the people that do serve faithfully on this committee, because we really are beholden to them for their efforts, and I know that there have been challenges faced with meeting a quorum. So, I personally would support this, but I would like to ask other board members for their feedback.
I'd like to move to approve the, to return to a seven-member Measure H 2008 Citizens Oversight Committee.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. We're moving now to E5, Approval of Board Action on Student Discipline Cases. Go ahead.
In Case 11/12-16, I move to approve the findings and recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel for a one-full-year expulsion ending February 2013.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0.
In Case 11/12-17, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel for a full expulsion for one school year ending June 2012.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 5-0.
In the case of 11/12-18, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the... Was that one was a stipulated agreement?
It was actually a stipulated agreement.
Yeah. Move to approve the stipulated agreement agreeing to a one-school-year suspended expulsion ending in June 2012.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries 5-0.
And in Case 11/12-20, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the Hearing Panel for a full expulsion for one school year ending in June 2012.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, we are now on our conference agenda, and Dr. Mills, we are here to hear your follow-up Special Education Review of the FICMAT Assistance Team.
I am here to provide you a follow-up from our recent FICMAT visit. As you will recall, we had a very comprehensive FICMAT study in 2009 prior to my employment here, but we have, they have studied parent participation, communication, organization, fiscal, and program and training. Out of that, we developed an action plan, which was 154 goals that our department has been working on diligently. We decided that after all of our work, we wanted the FICMAT team to come back and just give us some feedback, have that original team come back. I actually got to meet them at that time, and I wanted to have their feedback as to how we are doing on those action plans and what they think. So, that's what they did. They came back in October. They spent two very intensive days with us. I had them very tightly scheduled. They interviewed 37 people, and I have the categories listed for you. They went through seven binders of evidence that I had for them that related to all of the 154 goals on the action plan. So, in the interest of time, I'm going to go through these very quickly, some of the highlights. Under parent participation and communication, they indicated that 92% of parents and staff indicated that there was significant improvement in communication since the FICMAT had its original study. This was based on Goal Number One, which was a compilation of eight pages of action plan goals, and it was also based on their interviews of the 37 people that they talked Let's see, they had been concerned in the past that we did not have enough interdepartmental communication, and they indicated that that has improved. We've been working hard with our budget office. We've been working a lot together. We've been working with Human Resources and Purchasing to try and improve those procedures, and we have developed procedures, so that is a work in progress and that is improving. We also created the District Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee, and I'm happy to see many, many of our parent advisory reps. We've had that in progress now for about 14 months, so that's been really a great supportive group, really nice. We also had our first district-wide parent education event, which was Rick Clements', and we had that inclusion discussion, which I think you're going to hear a little bit more about a little bit later. Then I'll move on to organizational review. According to FICMAT, we completed 96% of our action plan recommendations. One of the recommendations that they had was for the staff to better understand litigation, the litigation that was actually going on, and for them to understand due process when they were potentially involved in it. So, we've been providing a lot of legal training, and I've also been going out to sites to actually help them understand when they are involved in a situation. Here is what we have done wrong. Here is what we need to do better to improve this. Let's see. Another concern that they had in the past was that the school sites weren't following some of the procedures and the legal guidelines in special education. Again, that has improved. That is another work in progress. We have been doing a lot of training with our school sites, with our administrators. That is coming along well, so, again, we need to continue to work on that. They also recommended alternative dispute resolution. This is usually done at the SLPA level, but here we decided to go ahead and try and do it in our own district. We, I pulled in Doug and Joyce Little, who are state-of-the-art facilitated IEP trainers. We did train 28 people. That included administrators, special ed teachers, and some parent representatives. That went really well. We have implemented that, and we have a much more collaborative IEP approach where we really work with parents to make them part of the team. The last one under that section was staff morale. That was a real concern before. They showed that it has approved, but that we still need to work on that. They felt that it improved because we have a solid district office staff, that we have some stability. We have put in procedures. We have, you know, provided a lot of training, but then, on the other hand, the staff does feel that pressure to rise to that occasion, to the expectations, to follow all the legal guidelines and such. So, it is a kind of a double-edged sword there. So, we need to continue to do work on that. Okay, under the fiscal review, back in 2009, FICMAT was looking at whether the district could become its own SLPA. My understanding at that time is that there was no way that they would recommend that the district become its own SLPA in 2009. Now, they feel that we have the proper infrastructure and that we can consider that. They have two concerns, and their first concern in going forward is that they feel that this is going to require the Human Resources Department to be, you know, have a lot more jobs, so to speak. We have to have a lot more staff. We have to have our recruitment very quickly and very timely, and we have to fill our positions very quickly, and so on. So, that's one concern that they have. Another concern that they brought up is the role of the program specialist, and they felt that that needs more definition in our district. They pointed out that the program specialist title is actually one used at the SLPA level more commonly than is used at the district level. So, they advised that the program specialists be more of a supervisor in nature rather than program specialists that they are here. So, what I would recommend to you, if you do decide to consider the district becoming a single district SLPA, is to hire an outside expert to study that. You really want somebody independent to look at all of the issues, all of the jobs that we need to do to be ready for that, and all of the things that we need to do to prepare for that. So, and I think it should be someone independent. So, and I think it should be someone independent. So then, moving on to program review, as you know, the mental health issues have been completely redesigned at the state level, which has been a challenge to us in our district. We're still working with our SELPA to try and revamp the funding model, as well as to use some of those funds to improve the quality of our programs for our emotionally disturbed students. So that's one thing we need to do, is to continue that. I'm also recommending that we use our resources more effectively, and that is our instructional assistants. Provide more training for them, use them more strategically, and definitely have more oversight over our instructional assistants. And then, lastly, in that area, curriculum and strategies. You may know, we had our Lynda Mood Bell training for our staff that has been implemented at every site. We have provided all of the materials, all of the workbooks for students, and so on. We have, also have follow-up classes with our staff to provide the implementation and the fidelity in that program, and we have web access to the Lynda Mood Bell trainer. Lastly, the area of training, we have had a ton of training. I'm happy to say, we have lots of training this year. We've provided lots of training, legal training, both to our staff and to the administrators. And we've provided new train, new teacher training for our new staff. Deb Lozari and Kirsten Escobedo have led that, and they've done a great job, provided a massive training for our new staff to provide them support. We've also provided veteran teacher training, so for those teachers that are, have been here, but they still want to have that cutting-edge training, they've been involved in that. Had Lynda Mood Bell training, facilitated IEP, inclusion training for all of our staff with Rick Clemens, and we've had intensive behavior management. So in summary, of our one hundred and fifty-four goals, according to FICMAT, our completion rate on our action plan was approximately ninety percent. So, I will take any questions.
Well, thank you, first of all, and I would just like to thank you for all you've done, that you and your staff have done. And I think accountability has now become infused within our special education department, and it's clear that you've kind of institutionalized this notion of continuing to ask how we can do better. And so it's not a task that's ever over, but I appreciate your efforts moving in that direction and to get it, you know, plus ninety percent of all those FICMAT items is very commendable. I suspect some board members have some comments? No, there is no public comment. Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I had just a quick question, but first I want to echo Ms. Deacon's appreciation. I really appreciate the work that you, as well as others on your staff and, you know, members of the community as well, have done in terms of helping us work on this massive report. That at the time, it seemed like it was almost overwhelming, and it was questionable whether we'd ever get, even get a handle on the report, let alone how to, how to deal with all of the recommendations, et cetera. So to hear that we have accomplished over ninety percent of the recommendations that were made is phenomenal, I think. So, and a lot of that, the credit for that goes to you, as well as to your staff and, and the members of the original committee, the stakeholders committee that I think worked on a lot of these as well and helped, and helped guide the process, some of whom are in the room. But I just wanted to ask you a quick question. You mentioned the program specialists and, and that there's a need for a clearer job description in order to kind of bring their position, I guess, a little bit more into line with what would normally be expected. And I just wanted to clarify, I think you said this, but I was kind of catching up with all the other things. What specifically was the recommendation regarding them and regarding their position?
They're recommending that program specialists typically work for a SELPA. And they, you know, they're usually involved more in staff development, professional development at the SELPA level.
So are they suggesting that we have, that we've changed the title? Was that it?
The title and the job description, because our program specialists do a lot more than that.
So we would call them directors?
Uh, no, we would call them supervisors.
Supervisors?
Right.
Would typically, would that change also include a change in salary?
They did do a comparison during two thousand and nine, and they did some comparisons with other districts. It did show that we were paying at a lower rate than the other districts.
Could you give a maybe ballpark figure of what the increase, the recommended, the increase that would be measured with the recommended change would be?
You know, I haven't done recent comps, and I'd have to ask Ann to help me with that. So I only have the data from two thousand and nine that they actually gave the districts and the comparison. It's in the original FICMAT report, and that's on the web.
Okay.
But yeah, I could look at that and see what that is.
Look it up, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
But no, we haven't done comparisons recently.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Lemon?
Thank you so much. Wow, we've come a long way. And I think I would say, as a community, the district, the administration, the community, the parents, the students, the teachers. So this is great to hear. One comment, you mentioned that the recommendation was that we have an independent body come and review the SELPA consideration, and I would echo the importance of that because remembering where we were five years ago and where we are today, I don't want to forget our history and make sure that we have all the pieces in place to move forward in any direction. So I think that that would be important to consider. And the next thing is a question. I, our last FICMAT report was made public. Is this going to be made public?
I'll answer that question. There's parts of the report that probably wouldn't be appropriate because of some personnel issues.
Is there a way to modify that? Because I found-
It's not our report.
Okay, well, I wouldn't, can, I mean, I found it useful to read the last FICMAT report as a community member, as a potential school board member at the time, and so I don't want the community to not have access to information that I think is important. But I understand that if there's some information in there, that's information that's confidential, that's not, that aspect of the report is not appropriate. So I don't know if there's considerations to work with FICMAT and maybe on an executive summary of some sort.
We could certainly summarize the report if that's what you would like us to do.
I would like for something to be made public in writing versus nothing. And so if there's pieces of it that are confidential, then clearly not that. If we can't, we don't have the opportunity to modify it, then we don't. But I, I think that it was useful to have the last FICMAT report made public. And I don't, and I, and I think that there's a lot of good things, but I, and I think the community deserves to read what those good things are.
Well, and perhaps the report that Dr. Mills just provided to us would be a good place to start with that. What you just provided, what you provided this evening. Because not everybody's here, and not everybody's going to watch it on television, and so that document, I think, did a good job of summarizing. Mrs. Parker?
And I'll absolutely agree with Ms. Lemon on that. If there's anything that we can document, frankly, I think it means more if it comes from FICMAT than it does from our own staff, if we can. If there's, I'm looking at this saying it was an oral exit report, and I understand that there may be costs then that turn around and become involved if we ask for too much written documentation, but whatever we can do, I think it would be helpful. And with the understanding that there's always work to do, that you're always going to have to be hyper vigilant, that the special ed department has students that are highest need students, and, and so there will always be concerns, and there will always be issues that you're looking at.
Yes.
I do want to take this moment to really appreciate, and as Ms. Lemon said, you know, we're in such a different place than we were. So thank you, thank you to your staff, and thank you to our special education community, because we've really come a long way. So thanks.
Mr. Heron?
Yes, I'll pick up on Ms. Lemon also, and Mrs. Parker. It does say in this cover letter, an oral report, but there is a management letter that FICMAT did send. And I've had two requests for it personally, and I've not shared it, but I know one person will go through the right process to, you know, ask for it. So I'm not sure how much of it can be disclosed or not disclosed, or why it can't be disclosed, but in, in this whole FICMAT process for the last, since nineteen, or two thousand and eight, trying to be as open as we can with information has been the highlight of the last three years. We have been very transparent in what's going on. So if there's any way that some portion of this, it has to be redacted, redacted, but I'm not quite sure when, when you say, "Dr. Cash, this is not our report." It's a, it came from FICMAT. It's a management, maybe it's because of the management report that it's not a-
No, no, but we don't, we're not the author, so we don't control the content, is what I meant by that. So I couldn't tell them, "Take this out. Don't include this part."
Oh, yeah, okay, so, but the fact that they sent it to us in follow-up to their, their visit seems to me that that's information that, when you look at the original FICMAT report and you look at the follow-up, you can see firsthand from FICMAT what's been accomplished. It's not, it's not just an oral report highlighting the good things. And I think the management letter is very good, you know, so the more we can be transparent in it, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I think you have some direction from the board on that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to F. Three. Santa Barbara Unified District sunshine proposal to negotiate with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association for implementation of the two thousand twelve-thirteen school year. Ms. Peak?
Good evening. In accordance with collective bargaining laws, which the district negotiates with employees, the district is required to sunshine our proposal twice at public meetings. This is the first of those two times. So pursuant to our collective bargaining agreement with the teachers' union, each party agrees to reopen salary, employee benefits, and two other items for the twelve-thirteen school year. And the proposed articles we are hoping to negotiate are Article Four, wages; Article Five, health and welfare benefits; Article Six, hours and conditions; and Article Ten, on class sizes.
Do we have any comments? Ms. Lemon?
I'll make a motion. I mean, we don't need a motion, sorry.
We don't need to, it's a conference item. So we're just sunshining this at this point. Okay, I think we've read it all probably ahead of time, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, here's the big one tonight. Discussion of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Budget Reduction for two thousand twelve-thirteen.
So here we go, oh.
I don't think it's going to be a big one, unfortunately. There's a, but we're going to start with Ms. Chitay.
Thank you. So in January two thousand twelve, the governor released his two thousand twelve-thirteen proposed budget and its plans to solve a nine-point-two-billion-dollar budget problem. The cornerstone of the governor's, but, governor's two thousand twelve-thirteen budget was, plan was, is its assumptions that the voters will approve a temporary increase in income and sales tax through initiative that the governor has proposed to be on the November two thousand twelve ballot. In the event that these taxes do not pass in November, the district would be facing a mid-year, another mid-year trigger, three hundred and seventy dollars per student, loss of revenue, approximately four-point-nine million, and a reduction in our eleven-twelve structural deficit over the next three-year period for approximately, and the number on your, your report, your cover letter, the memo, is short because of some things I'm going to tell you what happened to us in eleven-twelve, but it's up to about eight hundred and, eight-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand for three years to get rid of the structural deficit, which brings us up to about five-point-eight million dollars. So before I answer any questions and go to the spreadsheet, I'd like to tell you what happened in two thousand eleven-twelve. At first, in January, they were proposing the trigger to be about thirteen dollars per ADA. That did happen, however, it was thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but you times it by thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-four point nine-two ADA, and it comes to an additional ten, almost ten thousand dollars. Transportation was fifty percent, however, that was four hundred and one thousand dollars for us. But then they said, "No, we'll give that back to you, and let's put point six-five on the revenue limit, increasing the deficit." That equated to more than two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars more in a cut than the four hundred thousand. I would have rather gone with a fifty percent cut in transportation. I don't want to go with any of it, but, so that increased our deficit from nineteen-point-seven-five-four percent to twenty-point-four-oh percent. So in two thousand thirteen, as you, as you heard before, three hundred and seventy dollars, which, times our ADA, which is about four-point-nine million dollars, closer to five. And then the structural deficit has increased from, first interim, from one-point-nine million to two-point-six, and some of that is in there. We did have a lot of our sites help us out with the, the mid-year triggers, and they were very cooperative, and we really appreciate everything that they helped us solve that part. Unfortunately, we didn't know it was going to be bigger than we asked them for, but. So Conrad, if you could pull up the, so here's how it looks. In two thousand eleven-twelve, this is our second interim, and we just finished it today. Not completely, but the actual dollars are all in there. We are looking at a two-point-four, two-point, two-point-two-four percent COLA with a deficit of two-point-six-five-four percent. Our ADA is thirteen thousand three forty-four point nine-two. That includes special ed and the county. So you can see that our revenue total unrestricted revenue limit sources is seventy-nine million, almost eighty million. Our federal and state and local come to about seventy-seven million, six-twenty-eight, two-fifty-two, two-fifty-eight. You're down further, Conrad. There you go. Now, when you get into the expenditures, I guess the best thing is just go down to the bottom, and you can see where we're planning to be at the end of this, at the end of this year with a six-point, a three-point-six-seven-six point, or two-two-eight, and that's about what we need for our three percent reserve. So we are, I think we're about seventeen thousand dollars above our three percent reserve. So if you go back up to what's going to happen in two thousand twelve with the governor's proposing. Can you go up a little more? Yeah. So you see that we have a three-point-one-seven percent, the governor's proposing, flat funding. That includes the nineteen-point-seven-five percent, the point six-five for transportation, and then to wipe out the three-point-one-seven percent COLA. So at first interim to second interim, that mid-year cut, or not mid-year cut, but that change in the, in the funding lost us three-point-two million dollars for doing flat funding. So in other words, the COLA then grew by twenty-point-six-five-four percent to twenty-two-point-eight-three, almost twenty-three percent in deficit. So as you can see, I put the five-point-nine million in as a, what would be our deficit, our structural deficit and our three, our three hundred and seventy per ADA. So the bottom line, Conrad, if you can go all the way down, you can see how it's compounding. So we now have a net increase-decrease of nine-point-nine, but what we really need to focus on is our ending fund balance as of June thirtieth, if we do nothing, which is a negative six, six-point-three million. So that's our target.
Mrs. Deacon?
Can I just jump in with a quick clarification right here? Because I think that the public will be going, "Okay, so what happens if the governor's proposals, initiatives on the ballot don't pass? And what happens if they do pass?" It sounds like what you're saying is, "If they were to pass, we would still be three-point-two million dollars less."
We would be, from first interim to second interim, because this is just thirteen-twelve, you know, twelve-thirteen. We haven't gotten the official budget. But what would happen is, he would eliminate the three hundred and seventy dollars per ADA, which would be great, but no additional income would come. We are, we have been told to flat fund. The same funding we have for two thousand eleven-twelve will be in twelve-thirteen. The same funding we have for 2011-12 will be in 12-13.
You need her to go to the third year, just gets more depressing.
It just, it compounds itself. If we do nothing, we're at $11 million.
No, I think we've always known that structural deficit is just the poison pill. I mean, it just keeps compounding exponentially. Ms. Limon?
There's been a lot of change to education and funding and where it's coming and where it's going. And one of the things I've heard the public ask is where does the RDA fall into this? Can you please clarify?
Absolutely. The RDA is basically get shifted up to the state. So on the top number where you see in 11-12, you see 6.380352, that's our state aid deficit. I mean, our state aid, sorry, our state aid. So that's the money that we get from the state. If, when, if and when we get that RDA money, it will go to the state, and that's about a $2 million they're estimating. So that number will go down to 4.3 million, and it'll, the RDA will come through as our property taxes. So it only helps the state. I, I didn't explain that very well. It comes through our property taxes, so the state does not have to pay us that $2 million. It does not give us any additional funds. It just helps the state with their funding.
So what about basic? Is there any chance we'd be pushed into basic aid, or would that help us at all, or is the basic aid...
The basic aid is pretty far out of our reach right now.
So to be clear, the elimination of RDA does not bring in additional revenue to the school district?
There's a lot of uncertainty, and we have a board brief, or, yeah, a board brief that's going out on the 16th that gives you a lot of background on RDAs. But at this point in time, with all the craziness that's going, surrounding that, we're not holding our breath.
And we've been advised not to.
Okay. Well, and that's, I think, important to note, so that there is no assumptions made that somehow it's all gonna balance itself out, and the $6 million from the city is just coming right over to us, because that's not the case.
I'll just clarify on that, that it, that I agree, you can't count on that at all, but it is in a, I would say, almost chaotic state right now.
It is.
And I don't think that we, as a district, will be able to say anything, one way or the other, until the summer, if then.
Right. Well, I guess this really puts into focus the importance of the parcel taxes as well, because any additional revenues that come to us, you know, spare us in some ways, even though we're obviously gonna have to plan for a worst-case scenario. Mr. Herron?
That was my question. Do these numbers reflect parcel taxes in any way, shape, or form?
No.
Okay.
We, the general fund won't be spared. It would be the supplemental money that would come in for programs that are very vulnerable to begin with.
Yes. I, I would conclude, I mean, by just saying that a $370 per student cut is massive, and that's, that's not a small cut. And we've cut over $20 million in the last few years, and to have to cut another $6 million, I mean, you guys have done all of the tricks that can be done. You've cut everything possible that can be cut. And so really, the only things that are left are pretty straightforward. And I like to make things simple. I think it's easier for myself to understand, and maybe for others. And from my perspective, this is, it's gonna be a much simpler proposition, because there are so few options left for the district to explore. And I'm gonna start by proposing a reorganization of the central office as the first cut. And I believe that depending upon the board's prerogative, my proposal will save the district hundreds of thousands of dollars. And exactly how many, we've determined by, you know, where the board wants to go in relationship to that. I think the only two other areas that we can significantly look at when we're talking about $6 million are class sizes, which mean a reduction in force, layoffs, and furlough days, which means a reduction in pay and a potential reduction in the school year. Those are really the options that are left for us to explore. And so our plan at the next board meeting is to bring forward some recommendations in relationship to those areas, and I would look for your guidance at this particular time, if there was anything else. It will not be my intention to bring forward proposals related to reducing one employee group versus another employee group. I think we're already, our employee groups are, are already running at the max, the minimum amount. And the reduction in our central office is gonna be a huge issue. We already are approximately 50% of the recommended number of administrators in the central office. Our jobs will not shrink. In fact, everyone that's left standing in the district office is not only gonna have to do what they're currently doing, they're gonna have to do what those people who will no longer be working here will be doing as well, because that work does not go away. And the same will be true if we have a reduction in force for teachers. And I'd say publicly, the worst thing about layoffs is that we're gonna impact probably, without a doubt, the most important employee in our district, and that's those that interact with children each and every day, and that's our classroom teachers. And whether that's done through furlough days, fewer days that they're with kids, or whether that's done through layoffs, those are both bad options ultimately for kids. It's a sad day in the state of California when school districts like Santa Barbara are left with only those options. But I'm afraid that's where we're at. So that's what you'll hear from us over the next couple of weeks, and obviously, I'll be bringing forward a resolution for the board's consideration for a reduction in force at the February 28th board meeting.
Okay, well, it's a pretty grim assessment, and I know none of us wanna go there, and I know all of us realize we probably have to. So I wish there was some hope out there, but I'm starting to feel like there's not.
The good thing is, is that we have, I mean, we have great staff. I mean, I, I'm just constantly reminded of that. And so, you know, as a parent myself, I know that, you know, when, when, when our children are dropped off at school, they're gonna be in the hands of some really caring, compassionate people, starting with the office, you know, and all the way through their entire day, and ending with the custodian that cleans up at night. We've got people that care about kids, and they're, they'll continue to do great work with children. So, you know, that makes me positive about what our children's experience is gonna be like. The choices that we're gonna have to make, though, are, are not good ones.
I agree. Okay.
I'll, can I just, you know, just, I think I said this at the last term, we had this same problem when we were looking for 10 million. I would like us to do anything possible to save jobs and shorten the school year with professional development days rather than teaching days, and only as a last resort, affect the teachers and the students and their daily educational pursuits. So anything we can do to have furlough days and shorter school year, if necessary, would be my hope.
All right. Let us move to F5. I know there's some folks here in the audience who've been waiting a long time to talk about professional development curriculum to incorporate inclusion of special education students. And Dr. Cash?
I received a, a letter from the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee requesting that the board formally adopt inclusion as a district educational value and priority. And I would agree with their, the statement that follows, that recent research, and I don't think it's just recent research, because I, I was an inclu, inclusion special ed teacher a long time ago, that most research indicates it's best for kids, not just the, the students with disabilities, but all students it's beneficial to. And I, and it's, it was requested that this be, matter be before the board. I think it's appropriate that it is, and my, I have two comments. One comment is, is that as the board is aware, we're engaged in what is turning out to be, I think, a pretty wonderful process, the strategic planning process. And clearly, part of that, while I intend not to, you know, foretell, foretell the future with regard to what we'll come up with, but clearly, part of it, I believe, will include how we are going to best provide for the needs of all of our students, including our students with disabilities, which would mean how best to provide instruction in classrooms, where should those students be, what's the least restrictive environment. And so I, I fully believe that that will be part of the process, and the board will have, obviously, an opportunity to formally adopt the strategic plan that would include that. Additionally to that, we have been engaged all year long at the principal's level with conversations about how best to meet the needs of our students with disabilities. Is our current system working in relationship to individual students and their needs? And it has been a most stimulating conversation. I think I'll set in my own mind 10 minutes for the conversation at a principal's meeting, and then notice that maybe 50 minutes later, we're still talking about it. So we've had several conversations about that, about how best to meet their needs. And it, it will require, you know, typically, what we've done in the past is we have targeted our special ed teachers for inclusion training. But the reality is, it's our general education teachers that need the support and the understanding on how best to meet those, those students' needs in the context of a general education classroom. And so while I, you know, I encourage you to do whatever you would like to do in relationship to the request, I can assure you that as the strategic planning task force process moves forward, it's my belief and hope that it will definitely be included in that process. And if it's not, then I would anticipate you would remind me of that when the plan is presented and send it back for revision to include it. But I also wanted to let you know that prior to the letter, we had, at the school site leadership level, had already begun engaging in this conversation about how to do that. So.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I know this is on our conference agenda, but we, it's possible for us to act on items that are on the conference agenda if we seem that, if it seems appropriate.
Absolutely.
And I think this one is appropriate, and I would, I, I would like us to act in, by directing the superintendent to ensure that this is in the strategic plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, Lynn Rodriguez is the witness that I've been directed to do that.
Any discussion? I, I wanna make one comment, but any other board members? Ms. Limon?
Well, I, I, I think that this is very important, and I would like to, I think that our vote tonight will publicly affirm that our commitment to inclusion. And so I'd like to thank the advisory committee for bringing this to our attention and for working so closely together to really also help the board understand the direction that we should be taking, because I think that the good, the nice and the important thing about the advisory committee is that there are different perspectives on the advisory committee that make up a much bigger special ed community and district community. So I think that's very important. Thank you for the letter from the advisory committee, for the time, and I'm happy to publicly support inclusion as a district value.
I agree, and I would also like to thank the group, because they did exactly what this group is supposed to do, which is be proactive and to be advocates for their children and other children with disabilities. And so I, I, this is the way the system is supposed to work, and I'm really pleased about that. And just one small note on, on inclusion, one of the best conversations I ever had with a, a parent was the mother of a severely handicapped daughter, she was at San Marcos High School, who every day went to an art class, a general ed art class, and even though she had very severe physical handicaps, she got, or disability, she got so much out of that art class, and her mother was so proud of that experience. Her mother wasn't going to water polo games cheering her daughter on, but she was cheering on her daughter's participation in that art class, and it was just really heartfelt and really made me realize how valuable those experiences are to students at all levels. So having said that, Mr. Herron?
Yes, I'd like to just add a little different taste to it. I think the fact that this group has been meeting now for some 14 months, and this is really their first official action, it reinforces the power they have, it reinforces the benefit we get from them, and I, and these aren't, these are, these are just parents for the most part. And I think this will show that, that they have meaning, that there's something they, they're doing that's valuable to this district. I think it's a great, just a great symbol of what we can have from our volunteer groups.
All right. Well, we have a motion. We have a second. Like, vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you again very much for your hard work. Okay. All right. We are now going to return to our consent items designated for discussion, and I believe those were items six and seven.
Six, seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I had a moment there at the beginning of the meeting, it's still following me. All right, D7.
I'm the one that pulled that, and I pulled it because of a lot of concerns about bringing in an assistant principal to an elementary site that's essentially a similar size and similar need level of so many of our, of our district schools, elementary district schools, Title I schools. And I know that Thrive has proposed to pay for this. I don't know how long that they would continue, but I have a lot of questions about it. And I guess my first question would be, it says the MOU with IB requires the creation of this position, and I haven't seen the MOU with IB, Dr. Cash, and so I guess that's my, my first question.
Dr. Kingston. I asked her to be here.
Dr. Kingston, who has maybe been in carpentry?
Could've been.
Hmm.
I missed the question.
The, the IB, the IB MOU. It says the MOU with IB requires the creation of an assistant principal position.
No. The IB requires an IB coordinator position.
Mm-hmm. And that is already funded through Thrive, correct?
So that, they're two separate things. So right now, we have IB coordination through a teacher who is a classroom teacher and paid additional hours for categoricals to work on that. This is just solely about the position that's currently the Harding Early Years Director position. I've been working with Dr. Cash and John Clark, who's kind of the primary Thrive person, to restructure that for a variety of reasons, just kind of looking at, was it working or not working? I would say that it's, would be an improvement to have an assistant principal of zero to 12 to support the principal in the Thrive efforts. As opposed to the, a separate director.
And that was my idea.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we could simply just replace the director. And my take, I'm sorry.
Well, I would just say, one of my concerns is, is how do you talk, how do you pay the principal at Harding the same amount of money as all of our other elementary principals when that person has a full-time assistant principal? And I, I see some value in terms of it being like a training ground for administration, but that is one of my concerns. And also, I don't know how the conversation with Thrive has been in terms of what they're funding at Harding. A lot of our schools are doing some really great things with how, having another administrator, and, and I just don't know that there's research that supports adding an administrator to an elementary school in terms of that being what moves student achievement. And, and so, just to me, I, I, I don't know that that's necessarily the best way for Thrive Westside to be spending their money, and I just don't know how much they've analyzed it.
So I can respond to that. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, go.
So Thrive is working with Strive, and I think you've been to those presentations, and the number one thing that they're emphasizing in Strive to Thrive is that backbone matters. And so some of the things that most funders don't wanna fund are infrastructure, whether it's an office assistant, or over extra hours for custodian to support things, or childcare, or in this case, someone to direct the zero-to-five program. So this is not, this is a shift, so that, this is how I see it. Most of my weekend time is spent on Harding, which is fine with me, but it's because, and we, you, you and I have discussed this when we had our big community meeting about the plan, is how do you do all of this plus school? And so one thing that, over time, I have analyzed is that you can't really have two chiefs, that does not work. And the goal is integration and replic- chiefs. That does not work. And the goal is integration and replicability. So the ultimate goal of Strive and Thrive, as I understand it, is to come up with things that are replicatable so that there can be zero to, there can be pathways across districts, not just at the Westside, but the Westside is where they started with Thrive. And the principal needs to be able to have time to not be on the yard, not be doing discipline, not be doing IPs, and then going home writing evaluations, and then Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, working with funders, writing the plans, procuring the funding, asking Meg to meet again to make sure all the funding is spent properly. So there is an additional set of duties, and I would just say, it's not a perfect model to have a director and a principal if the goal is integration. But they are committed to funding infrastructure, and I think they've learned and are learning from Strive that they need to spend the money on infrastructure.
Well, here's a question then for you, Dr. Kingston, and that is, you know, in our community, in our district, there is once, another school that's getting extra funding, and that's McKinley, which has been highly successful in turning around student achievement and raising student achievement levels. They're doing that through a state grant, QIA. And that money gets spent largely on class size reduction, and then partially on teacher development, professional development and training. And I guess my question is, has Thrive looked at that? Have they looked at, you know, these are the same students, the same part of town, actually, very similar backgrounds, this has worked. Do they, have they, have they compared what's already going on in our district?
So the current emphasis of Thrive, as we build the pathway from grade four to college and career, the current emphasis is on zero to five. So McKinley has Avance, we have Avance, Padres adelante, the first bilingual PEP. We have a team of social-emotional support providers. There are five adults that push into the classroom and do multi-tiered. We have a family resource center. We have a comprehensive family plan for the year. We have four full-day preschools. We have a home preschool. We have onsite screening. So we've kind of taken the plan and put it in place. And I think that, I can't speak for what other schools are doing and are not doing, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the funders, but the conversations we've had about are what all of that that's in place and what's needed to make that work. All the coordination. We have a data analysis system. I know I've talked to Dr. Cash about this, and others have too, that we use called GEMS. It's very time-consuming, and should we be using Ares? And all of those things are still being developed.
Ms. Limon?
I have a question. How long is this position funded, and what happens when the funding runs out?
So I can only answer what I've been told, and it's the same as if it were the director position. I understand that they're going to see the project through. The main thing that, and I say through, what Thrive is looking for, and many of you have heard the presentations, and the way I've worked with funders is that they're looking for results. So they're not saying to principals at any of the schools, "We want you to do X program, but show us the results and come up with a plan that you think works." Harding went from having 14% of its students ready to go on the KSEP to 39%. So we have the most growth in the county, so I know the funders are thrilled with the work, and really looking at what happens. Their goal right now, and we are building the pathway to college, but the goal is kindergarten readiness. So I can't answer for them. I think it wouldn't be right for me to speak on behalf of their commitment.
So, and I guess that we just finished a conversation about the budget and staffing, and I really think of what we, I'm thinking about, what is it that we need to do to sustain student achievement? And so if this is a position that is part of the Thrive-Harding partnership and model, what happens when we've achieved results? I don't know if that's in five years or in two years. Does the funding go away? And then what does that do systemically to that particular campus? I mean, if it goes away, do we, how does it all reshift? Because one of the things that I noticed in the job description, as kind of a community person, my idea of what a director did and what an assistant principal did were actually different. I went through this job description, and I kind of circled every time that the word "family" or "parent education" came up, in compared to how much I actually thought the director did. And there's a big discrepancy. So I'm just trying to get a grasp of, how long is this position here? What happens when we achieve results? How does Harding the school accommodate to maybe not having an assistant principal? Because I don't think we're looking to grow in that particular area. And what does this really mean? Because I thought the director, the director was much more involved with the family piece of it, and I mean, this reads as an assistant principal position.
Well, I'm going to take all the blame for this.
No, and actually, no, I don't, I don't think there's blame here.
Well, no, I am, because the easiest thing would have been just to replace the director. That would have been simple. It wouldn't even been a board conversation. But the reality is, is that position, as I'm talking to John Clark for a long time, and also Dr. Kingston, clearly that job description and that position was, I'll just, I'll say it, was kind of like a dead end. I mean, it was going to perform a specific task for probably a very limited period of time, and it wouldn't be something that we could leverage into more benefit for the school and for our district. And so in those conversations, it became very clear that the best possible thing to do would be to change that to somebody who could be involved in a zero to 12, so that they weren't seen as separate entities, the Harding Early Years Program and the Harding University Partnership School, that there was one place in which Westside families took their kids and themselves to get a comprehensive, you know, approach to early childhood education and becoming a literate person and a citizen of their community. And so that meant giving the current principal and whoever would sit in that chair the opportunity to be part of that person and receive assistance from, in that zero to 12 thing. I mean, I'm getting, I'm kind of sensing that the simplest thing to do is just go back and do the director, which I hate doing. I hate kind of defaulting to a position that just, so I'll take all the blame for this, because it was my idea.
No, and actually, I don't know that it's a bad idea. I think what I'm trying to gauge is an understanding of why this is a better idea, and that's the piece. I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea. I mean, I've already been asked by Harding parents, what's going to happen to the position, and what does it look like? And so I think as a board member, I need the tools to make sure that I personally feel comfortable that this is the right decision, and I trust your expertise. So I'm not looking to blame anyone or actually think it's a bad thing. I need, I need the information to understand why this is a better thing. So.
I think the question you ask is what will happen if the funding goes away? It's exactly what would happen if the funding goes away right now. There won't be Padres adelante, there won't be any of those programs, and therefore, you don't need the extra support. Whether it's a directorship or an assistant principal, I think of the money as year-to-year. I think of the partnerships as something I have to cultivate, work on, communicate, and really develop. Part of the job is grant-writing to get more funds. So I think we just have to have that in mind. No matter what the position is, we can't count on that money as forever.
Mrs. Cordero.
I actually don't object to this at all. I think that the school, working together with the funders, have identified what they think will work. I feel like, like Harding has done a tremendous amount of work in bringing together programs and creating the whole IB model, et cetera, with all the university partnerships, that they, the school kind of deserves a little bit of, I guess I don't want to go so far as to say autonomy, because we certainly want our schools to be functioning within the parameters of the district, but some flexibility, at least, outside what, I don't, their model isn't the same as the models that we have at other schools, and therefore, they deserve a little bit of flexibility to function a little bit differently. I also believe that if Thrive, I mean, these are, this is an organization that has done a tremendous amount of research in the area. They've worked with community groups, et cetera. They didn't just come in in five minutes, say, "We're going to, we want to do this program." I feel like, if they're willing to fund it, the school thinks they need it. I'm perfectly willing to say, "Let's go for it." If the principal, in her expertise, the funders in their expertise, think this is a good program, my only caveat, my only, you know, sort of limit on this would be just to say, yes, I would be happy to approve it, with the understanding that if the funding goes away, the district is not going to provide the funding. So whatever has to happen, if that, in that case, we'll have to be sort of on the back burner as a Plan B. But if the funding is there, why not let them move forward with a program that's, or the plan that seems tailor-made to serve the benef, the, this school in the best possible way that other schools don't have? Now, I understand the whole question, and, and I immediately respond, and sort of, that immediately resonated with me, how can we justify paying a principal in this position, the same as another principal, when this person will have a full-time assistant principal that other principals don't have? But the fact remains, one, that if other schools went out and raised the money to hire an assistant principal, we'd probably let them do it. And two, that the program is very, it's very different. It demands, it has other demands than what the other schools have. I, you know, I really feel like we need to treat our schools sort of individually, not that we want them to all be, you know, to not have any continuity, but we need to look at them individually and see what actually works for them. So anyways, I'm repeating myself, but I just want to say, as long as we do it with the understanding that we will not, the district, the general fund will not fund this if the funding goes away, I don't know what we have to lose with, with letting, letting this go forward.
There is no money in the general fund, so we don't have to worry.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly it. I mean, we, we can't pick it up if the, if the funding goes away. But as long as they have funding, why not do it?
Mr. Heron?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I agree with Mrs. Cordero, definitely. But I also have Mrs. Parker's concern. Why doesn't McKinley need this position? Don't they have the same program?
They don't.
They don't go zero to 12?
Uh, yes, they do. Yes. But they don't have the same, the same number of programs, and also, they don't have, Thrive interested in providing them with the funding to do it. And whether or not that's my responsibility to ensure that to happen or not is, is still somewhat a little unclear to me in relationship to my role and the district's role regarding Thrive.
So this is a test, that if it works out, that maybe Thrive would raise the money to do it at other schools?
Well, I, it's clear to me that Harding is a, an innovation that Thrive is attempting to support or is supporting, with the hopes of what Dr. Kingston stated, having the successful practices replicated elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Parker, and then I think we're going to wrap things up here.
And I guess I'll just follow up on it, in that as much as our, our individual neighborhood schools have their differences, there is a morale effect. There are consequences for everything that we do at each of the sites, and the separate fundraising that, you know, as much as some schools seek it, other schools get it. And, and I don't see this as being replicable. So if it turned out that hiring this assistant principal made a huge difference in student achievement at Harding School, then I don't see how we could possibly turn around and say, "Okay, well, we're going to do this at all of our elementary schools." We couldn't. And I don't think Thrive could do it. To me, following up on what Ms. Limon said, I guess one of my questions would be, maybe you change the director position so that it's a zero to 12 director position, or there's just further conversation around it. And also, I'd be curious to hear what the other elementary principals, you know, I don't know if you can get an unbiased feedback on it, but I do think that their voice is important.
One more, one more comment.
Sorry. And I just, you know, I had the opportunity to give a presentation to the Padres adelante group last week, and this came up. And so I just, when I read this, it was a different job description than what the parents think that the director is supposed to do. And for me, I think a lot of the success that Harding has had, has been on the model you've had in working with the community and the parents, and I don't want that to be lost. So my comment, I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing, but I do think that we have to recognize there is a group of parents out there that understand the role of a director to be one thing. I read this, and it's not exactly the same. And I feel like Harding needs to be commended for the amazing work it's done with the parents, because that's a big part of it, and it's hard to do. And I don't want that to be lost. So.
I would like to comment that one of my concerns is that the parents have a perception of the job description that is not in full. It's managing the social-emotional component, the health and well-being component, and the preschools, and much of that is the work that they don't see that I do, on top of being at lunch duty for two hours, doing every evaluation, evaluating the preschool teachers, doing walkthroughs in their classrooms. And that is not sustainable for any principal. So I think the family piece is very important. I also created the family plan, so, just so it's transparent. Most of that work I have been doing, and I'm worried that that is not sustainable for any other human being. And getting a person in the director position that understands all those components, and I want to add, the, the funders are not interested in who the director is. They care about who the principal is, and that's who goes to the Thrive meetings, the evaluation meetings. So if you add all of those things together, you need to have the backbone in there so that the principal can run the whole program, in my opinion. I'm not wedded to any of the models, but the backbone has to be there for the school.
And I would agree with that, but I also want to recognize that for the parent and student community, this year, there may be a lot of change.
I understand.
And so I, I don't, I don't want to ignore that this is one piece of the change, but there may be more pieces of the change. And I applaud what Harding's done, but I don't want to lose it in effort of, here's what the job description says, but the reality is, is it's going to be a lot of change for our Harding School community. So I want to recognize that and make sure that we think about that as we move forward.
Okay. I think I'm going to wrap this up now, but I, I would just like to say that, that one of my concerns is what happens when the funding goes away, if it does. Because then you are left with a structure that is, that has integrated the principal and the assistant principal position, and to un, kind of unweave that, that whole might become difficult. But on the other hand, I'm a big proponent of public-private partnerships. Turning away funding is something that is an anathema to me. We, we allow PTSA's to hire science specialists and PE specialists, and, and those groups advocate for specific kinds of, of interests that they care about. So I think I'm generally willing to go forward and give this a try. But I, I would say with the caveat that we need to be prepared if the funding goes away, that Harding would have to, to live with the consequences of a new structure that, that might no longer exist. Ms. Cordero.
You touched already on what I was going to say. I was just going to say that I think we already have models throughout our district of schools not having parity. I mean, that's actually an issue at the secondary schools already. I mean, but, but, you know, we don't tell Mr. Ealing, "Sorry, we don't want your million dollars because the other schools aren't getting it." You know, we take it, and we benefit the students that it benefits. And I feel like I certainly would have, I have real concerns about taking an organization like Thrive and basically turning down their offer to fund a model that could potentially work extremely well for the students that it's serving. Now, I, I do regret that possibly it would, it could benefit, that same model could benefit other schools as well, or something similar, and that maybe they won't have it. But that's not a good reason not to benefit the students that could be benefiting. And I just feel like we're being a little bit inconsistent if we do that, when we haven't done it across the board.
I'd like to see if there's a motion.
I just, I'd like to, I'd like to see this approved. But I'd like to also see, because I, I'm a big believer in family, and I didn't notice those discrepancies, if there were some modifications that Ms. Limon could present to Dr. Cash and maybe get them included in the job description, I, I would move that we approve D7.
Second.
And, but I would like to add to it that, give Ms. Limon the opportunity to And, but I would like to add to it, that give Ms. Lamone the opportunity to make some comments to Dr. Cash about the job description, include more of the family element if possible.
Great, and I, and I want to be clear, that this was never about rejecting the proposal, I think for me it was more about including families, so I would be happy to follow up. I can follow up with the both of you individually about what some of the parent concerns were, happy to do that. And I don't think that would require modification to the description, but more the practice of how we move forward and how we're going to work with our Harding community parents.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion?
Yes, and I'll just say that I can't support it not knowing what those modifications would be.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries four one. All right, earlier today, we recessed our closed session because we still had some unfinished business, so I'm going to close open session. We're going to recess into closed session and hopefully be back out quickly to report out.